Holy allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes. Mayor Evans? Vice Mayor Parrish? Mr. Velardo? Mr. Price? Mr. Thompson? Ms. Cooper? Ms. Chamberlain?
That takes it to our public hearing. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the process for creating the TIF, we're required to offer a public hearing to seek resident feedback on the incentive itself. As just a quick overview, the whole point of this is it's a residential TIF that would be placed on the area development as a whole. Each of the property owners were contacted via mail in terms of a notice. We did have some issues with prior addresses being on the property tax card. So, I know we had one that was sent to Texas. But we did our best to meet with all the residents that reached out. We even went to a house of one of the residents and we had really good conversation. But this is really an opportunity for the community, specifically the residents as well, to be able to provide input on the incentive itself. So, I don't know if we have anyone here that is wanting to speak on the TIF itself, but this is your time to do so.
Would anyone like to comment on the TIF?
This is just for the TIF.
This is just for the TIF.
This is not for anything else right now.
Correct.
Come on up. Just please state your name and address for the record.
John Laban's, 54 Mound. So, my understanding is they still pay the same property tax everyone else does, yet their property tax goes to something different.
That's correct. So, in terms of the resident itself, nothing changes in terms of the property tax. There's no abatement. Anything that would have been paid had there not been an incentive will be paid. The difference is on our end in which we're able to capture those revenues. So, we get a small percentage of the property tax if you look at the property tax card. So, other than the schools, you know, the rest of it, you know, is spread amongst the county, township, and so forth. So, what we have the ability to do is capture that increased value and utilize that for public expenditures on that particular site itself. We can't use it anywhere else in town and we can only utilize it for expenses that are eligible within the Ohio revise code.
And are there other TIF districts currently in the city?
Currently, no. There wasn't approved TIF last year, but the project has not come onboard yet, so there is no active TIFs.
Okay, and then the last question is the public infrastructure that it would go towards, who would normally pay for that or build that in a new development?
Depends. If it's public infrastructure, then either, well, the developer could put that in the ground or that could be a joint partnership. But there's several issues on the site itself, whether it's stormwater, whether it's just really the infrastructure as a whole. So, it depends upon, it's a case by case.
And then the last one, sort of more just a snarky comment. So, can we get a TIF and fix Cleveland and Mill?
In terms of stormwater? That is actually on our list to be engineered and figure out what the cost is. So, stay tuned for more information.
Anybody else like to comment about the TIF? Please state your name and address.
Doug Michael, 16 Claratoma. So, has there been items that have been somewhat earmarked for this TIF? Because I know you were talking about stormwater drainage and things of that nature. And I know when this development went in place, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of concern that was brought up Apple Lane down in Claratoma about the runoff. And unfortunately, I don't think that has been addressed as well as it has. I know there's some retaining ponds. They don't seem to be working. I honestly don't think they're really kept in good shape. They're completely covered with moss and there's still extension cords running into them and things of that nature. And so, it seems like we're kind of going back and trying to pay for maybe potentially some stuff that the developer didn't address properly during this entire process. I know now continuing, if it rains at all, entire Garfield is flooded, like standing water puddles. So, I have a concern if us as taxpayers are going to be funding the shortfalls of the developer. The old South Milford building is still there. It's still somewhat of an eyesore. It's a start and stop. You know, my concern is now we're going to potentially have to pay for asbestos abatement and stuff that we thought that the developer would be doing, that now the city's going to get stuck with the bill. We have also seen this developer damage the infrastructure of, you know, I think last year or the year before in December where they collapsed the line and the city had to come in and fix that line. I don't know if that money was ever collected back from the developer, but it seems like we're focusing on just this, let's be honest, high-end, expensive development and the developer is potentially going to ask the city for funding to help with the infrastructure. To me, that's part of a development. And unfortunately, the Claratoma development, Apple Lane, and even like Jeff was saying, you know, I think we have much bigger issues in South Milford. The Cleveland, we do have water down in Cleveland and, you know, a mill and stuff of that nature. So, you know, I have an issue with it. We're going to try to continue to fund a brand-new neighborhood to make their water abatement or other issues a priority. And I think it's also ironic that we sold them a school property, the school storma property, I think at a, probably a discounted rate, and we're literally taking the money out of the school district's pocket to pay for these things. Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment on the TIF?
I mean, there's a few different responses to that, I suppose, depending upon which angle we go. In terms of actual expenditures, we have no formalized list of things that we are going to pay with that money, simply because it's not official. So, I'm not planning for covering expenses until I have the ability to do so. So, to come up, say I have a list of things that we're going to pay for, we don't have that at this time, no.
Can I ask another question?
Certainly.
Your request to tip. I mean, I don't get that the developer, who comes in and says, "Let's make this subdivision a TIF area."
It depends. In this particular instance, the city is the one that initiated that process. It depends upon different projects. That can be part of the capital stack. That can be leveraged to, if a water line needs to be extended, say it's a large amount, that's something that you can bond out, for example, over the course of several years and that helps pay for those costs. But as it relates to this one specifically, the city is the one that initiated it due to the concerns that we have with that particular area.
And then, I know also, like on the High Street Development, those very expensive multi-tiered things, we collapsed the pipe there and the city have put the bill for that, once again, for developer, so forth and so on. So, I think going forward, we just need to make better decisions on what the expectation of our developers when they come in and develop our community.
Any council comment? You can comment on the TIF. Please state your name and address.
Rochelle Rapdickerson, 5440 South Milford Road. I'm just curious of the timeline for this TIF. What is the next step? I know we have in the public hearing tonight. Then will you vote on this tonight? Will you discuss it at another public meeting? Or what's the timeline in this proceeding?
So, the timeline, and Jackie, I don't know if you can help me. I believe the first read would be in October. We've got certain timelines that we have to meet per the Ohio revise code. So, that of notifying the residents or the affected area, then having a public hearing. We have also school obligations to notify the schools, both the Milford School and then Great Oaks. But after that, I believe the first meeting in October is when we'll do the first read.
Correct.
Donna Lucky, 910 Wallace. This piece of the property tax that, if I understand it right, you want to set aside for future problems, what would that money have gone to if you didn't use it for their projects? Who are we shorting by placing that money aside?
So, how the incentive works is, and just so we're on the same page, let's just say it's a piece of land, right now it's just grass, and let's say it's $100 that you pay in property taxes a year. You then put a house there and let's say it goes to $200. So, now it's $200 a year in property tax. That original $100, which is called or considered the base value, that stays the same. So, all of the taxing districts that are on the property tax card, they'll get that $100. And then it's the increased value that we would look to capture. So, under this proposal, it'd be a 10-year 75%. So, we'd get 75% of that increased value. The remaining would go to the other taxing districts.
Thank you.
Well, let's clarify that. I think she deserves a little better answer. From the standpoint that the money you asked would go into the general fund normally taxing, I believe that's the question she asked.
Claremont County.
Yeah.
My apologies. So, correct. So, had there not been incentive, it would go to Claremont County and all the other taxing entities that are on the tax card. So, they would then effectively only get that 25% instead of that 100% of that increased value. Is that better? Is that a better explanation? So, I guess in terms of shorting, I don't think we're shorting it because they're still, they're not losing anything. It's in terms of that increased value, we're trying to leverage that. Once that incentive falls off, then they'll continue to get that amount after that incentive falls off. That...
So, it's a percentage of the increase in value?
Correct. So, that original value will always remain with the taxing districts. Is that... Did I explain it well? Okay.
Claire.
Please let me know if I didn't.
Hi, Claire Oliver, 209 Laurel Avenue. I just want to add a little something to what Doug and Jeff said and kind of put it out there because not clear on the earlier question of who creates the TIF, who suggests it. So, I want to put it on record that I'd like to suggest a TIF for some of the other surrounding communities, South Milford and some of the other, you know, I'm sure there's water issues in Old Milford, other places. The Mill Cleveland issue has been referenced. Gatch has a horrible problem. Long time ago, there was talk of sewers, storm sewers. Wouldn't that kind of take care of some of this problem of water in some places? And lastly, I just want to point out that the developer has lowered his start price. That property was supposed to be starting at a much higher amount. If you look at the sign, it's got a new price pasted. They're all starting down on the 600s. So, those amounts keep coming down and it feels to me like there's a whole lot of emphasis going on and let's create something that's shiny and new that can be put out there. But we're not taking care of the rest of the house. The roof is leaking in other places. The floorboards are starting to go. We have to keep the whole community together and not just keep popping up new shiny new developments here and there to show.
And I'll respond to that. In terms of the TIF itself, that only works when, I mean, the easiest example is when there's a project that is producing a significant increased value. If you don't have that increased value, then that TIF becomes, it's not effective. So, that's why it's very easy to look at new stuff and say, "This is why it has an incentive," because it's starting from grass and now there's a significant investment there. I'm not disagreeing with your stance on there's other issues. And later, there's a presentation on our rates, our utility rates, and you'll see that in order to be in a good condition, we have to make adjustments. And in order to offset those adjustments, we have to take advantage of loans, grants, and incentives. Those are the three easiest ways that we can tackle some of these other issues. So, instead of taking and utilizing some of our, or paying cash or something, we're able to leverage outside revenues to pay for some of those projects. So, I'm not disagreeing with you, but this is a way that we try to strategize to leverage other revenue sources to pay for those projects.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans? Yes. Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes. That takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from July 15th?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the June 2025 financial statements?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
And do I have a motion to receive the July 2025 financial statement?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to presentations. We have several tonight. Our first is Hannah Lubbers, the Director of the Adams Claremont County Solid Waste District. Welcome.
You didn't know this, many people were coming out to see your presentation, did you?
I did all of them.
Thank you.
Hopefully, technology will work.
Jackie's got it.
Thank you. It's okay. I'm here because we are working on our solid waste plan. It's a 15-year plan and we revise it every five years. We are the Adams Claremont Solid Waste District. We're the only non-contiguous solid waste district in Ohio, but every county is required to have a solid waste district. And we have to adhere to a number of goals from Ohio EPA, including ensuring that there's landfill capacity for the garbage coming out of the district, that we're reducing the waste that's going into the landfill. So, we have to ensure that 25% of the waste that's generated from the district is being recycled or composted or reused somehow. And then there's a number of educational and outreach goals that we have to adhere to. So, this plan is, like I said, a 15-year plan and it's from 2025 to 2040. Thank you.
Jackie.
So, we're governed by a policy committee and a board of directors. The board of directors is the county commissioners for both counties and then we also have this policy committee. And it's a 15-member committee. And it's required by legislature. The members are listed here and we have Benjamin Gunnerson, your honor, policy committee, as he's been helping with the plan. And he's our representative for the largest municipality, but you can see all of the other members there. We have members from the Health District, the County Township Trustees, and then numerous public representatives. And so, the policy committee is responsible for coming up with the programs that we put in our plan to meet the goals that Ohio EPA requires. So, a lot of you are probably familiar with some of our existing programs. We have, we operate the recycling drop-offs. There's one behind the building here. There's 26 of them in Claremont County total and we have some in Adams County as well. We are involved in litter reduction and pickup. We partner with municipal court. We help fund their alternative sentencing program where they go around and clean up the roadways. And last year, they cleaned up 774 miles of roadways. And that number, we've been doing this for over 20 years and that number doesn't really ever seem to go down. We also are responsible for ensuring that we have ways of managing special items, hard-to-recycle items, so scrap tires, scrap tire management is one of those. We offer a public tire collection event and there's one coming up September 12th and 13th. It's at the Claremont County Fairgrounds from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And there is a fee associated with that and that's partially because of the grant that we use to fund it. Some other programs that we have, again, we have a number of cleanup events, spring litter cleanup, the city is involved in that. We partner with a lot of communities for that event. We are in the schools. We have a school waste reduction program. We've been meeting a lot with the Milford City Schools recently. And one of the programs that I think was kind of interesting, we've been trying to focus a little bit more on food waste reduction because it can comprise up to 22% of what goes into the landfill. We did a lunchroom audit at the cafeteria in Mark Cook Elementary in Goshen and 48% of what was coming out of the lunchroom was food waste. So, we've been really working with a lot of schools. We actually met with Milford Schools this morning to talk about trying to recover some of that food waste so that we can donate it and it's not just going in the trash. We offer a number of education and outreach programs and technical support to businesses and schools and colleges and things like that. We can offer waste audits to businesses. We are involved in debris management during emergencies. So, if there's a tornado or a big storm or a river flood, for the Ohio River Flood that happened in April, we were down there helping them clean up all the vegetative debris that accumulated. So, Ohio EPA has required several new programs and so we have adjusted our plan to add some of those. We, one of the programs that we're having now is a pollution prevention internship. We call it a P2 internship and we fund 75% of a summer intern that works on a pollution prevention program or project for a business. And in the past, we started two years ago in anticipation of this requirement by Ohio EPA and we've worked with Hamilton Safe so far and Milacron. So, it's been pretty successful. We didn't get any applicants this year, but we're going to continue the program next year. We have to expand our outreach programs to, just not in the schools. So, we've been working with communities. We need to work more with residents and businesses and things like that. School waste reduction, continuing on that, we have to do more than just presentations in the classroom. We have to interact and we have to use community-based social marketing so that we're actually trying to change behavior and not just giving presentations. And then we're expanding our support of organics and food waste processing. So, there's going to be a number of grants that we're going to provide starting in year 2027. And then, one of the things I'm most excited about is that we have new offices where we can accept special items. And I'm excited about that because typically when residents have household hazardous waste like paint, fertilizer, or things like that, they would have to take it to environmental enterprises downtown in Spring Grove Avenue. And now we're taking those materials at our office by appointment only. There's just two of us there, so we like to have appointments because we're at meetings sometimes, so we don't want things being left out on the front. But we're taking everything for free. Televisions, we do charge 40 cents per pound. And since we opened in January, we've serviced, served 168 residents. Our funding is not going to, we're not increasing how we're funded. Right now, we're funded by a $4 per ton generation fee and that's a fee that is collected by the waste hauler and then remitted back to us. So, it's $4 per ton on every ton of waste that comes out of Claremont and Adams County and that is how we receive our funding. But that is not going up during this planning cycle. Our timeline is, the plan is due November 9th of this year and we're pretty late in the plan. It's drafted and now I'm going around making the rounds to get resolutions and ordinances passed approving the plan. And we have until mid-September for that to pass or then Ohio EPA would come down and write the plan for us. And that's all for my presentation. We have a new website. We're working on it. We just started working on it. But here's my contact information and you can find everything you need there at ACSWD.org.
Hi, thank you very much for your presentation. That takes us to Jackson here, our sustainability intern. Welcome.
See if you can screencast it.
While he's working on that, Vanessa, would you like to go ahead and come up and chair while he's getting his presentation going? Yeah, yeah, come on up. You don't have a presentation, do you?
I don't.
Okay. So, you can go while he's getting that set up.
In the packet itself, though, there is the letter that Vanessa gave to all of councils, so you can reference that during her presentation.
Perfect, yeah. You've got some maps in there and just some details. Thank you for a few minutes tonight and a very full agenda. I just wanted to stop in and speak to our letter asking for your support for our Clean Ohio application and just give you a quick snapshot of what are, what we hope to achieve through that. We, I think you're all familiar with Valley View. We have, you know, thousands of people on the property and volunteers who last year donated close to 10,000 hours of work. And we try each year to improve our value to the community. And one of the things we know we really need to work on and we're really excited about is to improve the value of the natural habitat on the property. We know that's a challenge. Our folks try hard. We do manual labor and we have some limited capacity with our equipment, but we know that there's a lot more work to be done. We've worked with partners like the Nature Conservancy, Solid Waste District in Hannah, Soil and Water, Civic Garden Center, the zoo, and we've known this has been a big project for us, so we've been planning for a long time. That colorful map that you have with zones, that's our master plan. We're not planning to attach, you know, attack all 190 acres at once, but rather to target a certain area, the worst area, if you will, which happens to marry up to one of our initial Clean Ohio applications. It's a great opportunity because the Clean Ohio funds support restoration and improvements on property that was previously purchased with Clean Ohio dollars, which ours were. So, we've really married up to one of the first applications that we submitted and were awarded back in '05, '06. So, it almost, if you'll see that purple zone there, it overlaps on that first application. We see a lot of great opportunities in the restoration of the habitat, which has a lot of benefits, but incredible educational opportunities, community engagement, and definitely greatly improved accessibility for a wide range of people within our community. So, I, you know, your support would be, your, you know, consideration of support would be greatly appreciated. It helps our application to be much stronger knowing that you guys are with us on this project. I'm happy to answer any questions about the restoration. In a nutshell, it's a lot of removing invasives and then a lot of replanting and making Valley View all that it can be.
And roughly timeframe, is it...
So, the reason we tackle, we're just looking and targeting 70 acres is because there's really a two-year window that they want you to close out. So, we want, we don't want to get too far over our skis, but we think that it's a nice chunk and it's the worst chunks. It's kind of those main fields that have, are abandoned ag fields filled with honeysuckle and pears. So, we'll start there, show our success, and make sure that all of our monitoring and management is in great place before we go back and ask to do the next section.
Any other questions? Thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Valerie. Now, we're back to Jackson.
I think I'll just have to go without the presentation, which is totally fine. All right, so, just want to say thank you for letting me be here and share the work that I've done this summer. My name's Jackson Hare and I've been working here in Milford for the summer through Green Umbrella's Climate Action Fellowship. And essentially, what that means is my role this summer has been to help primarily through the Milford Community Sustainability Commission. the Milford Community Sustainability Commission, just advance sustainability initiatives in Milford. So, starting with just like my, I started with a couple of project areas from Green Umbrella, which include green schools, green space, energy benchmarking, plan review, things like that, climate budgeting, all these big things that were just like a lot of work to work through. But at the start, I kind of navigated into what the more important things were for Milford, and some of that was storytelling, community engagement. And starting from there, I conducted a public survey this summer, and we got 50-plus responses, which that was pretty good for an inaugural survey from the commission, the Sustainability Commission. And from there, we kind of identified some priorities from the, from the community that responded, the number one being protecting green space, and then recycling and composting being the next, and then a couple others. And from that, we also learned just kind of best practices for how the community wants to hear about sustainability initiatives. So the Sustainability Commission is prepared with a good, solid plan to work from in terms of community engagement. And then, also to support that outreach, I developed several templates for social media, sharing things like resident REIT features or business features that are doing great sustainability work, like having a garden at their home. Because the idea is just to kind of build a sense of pride in the community and highlight the work that's being done and that is going to be done as well. So they're pretty prepared to do that, and I'm excited to see what comes out of that. I also updated the content for the commission's webpage, which Shannon Roll has helped update for me, so that was a great help. And now there's some engagement there that tells you kind of what the Sustainability Commission is doing, and it'll guide their future actions as well. In terms of planning, policy, and data work that I did, I reviewed the city plans, regional plans, and peer community plans as well. So that's the comprehensive plan, the Claremont County Hazard Mitigation Plan, things like that, just to identify where sustainability is already being prioritized, or where it could be, or where there's opportunities. And just kind of developing recommendations for the commission to move forward with. So a lot of that includes integration into the budgeting process, kind of considering where we can budget for sustainability, and not in a way that adds more, but kind of makes it the same, break down the silo of a project essentially, so that sustainability can be incorporated into existing work to make sure that there's cost-saving opportunities as well. So on the data side, it was really easy for me in the sense that the first commission meeting I attended, they were hearing a pitch from an auditor called Brewer Garrett, and throughout the summer, I just coordinated getting them utility data for the past 12 months. And conveniently, that data is super helpful in the sense that it can be easily uploaded into a, the Energy Star Portfolio Manager, which will position Milford to have utility data for the energy use that all the city buildings are using, which helps us track progress when we replace light bulbs, for instance, to LEDs or things like that. And that'll help identify energy deficiencies as well to see if there's renovations or updates needed, to make sure that we're not losing money on things like old equipment or old appliances. So it'll help with that. But having that information also streamlines access to information that's needed for grant opportunities or future audits. So I think it'll position them well to do that kind of stuff. And finally, I also created a portfolio of map data that overlays things like areas where there's high flood risk, where the tree canopy is lower, and I combine that with demographic and economic data. So for instance, there's a map that has the tree canopy data mixed with where there's areas in Milford where the majority of the population is 65 or older. And I did that because that population tends to be more vulnerable to heat, and tree canopy can, with shade, lower that heat. And so then planting trees becomes a health problem and makes it a, a way to help with that and protect residents from like heat stroke or other heat-related illnesses. So just to inform the work in a way that is really intentional and hits the areas where they're impacted most. So just the key impacts and next step from that, like I said, Milford is ready to start energy benchmarking. It's super easy, takes two minutes once a month to add the data in when you have it all set up for you, and it's set up. So it just, we need somebody from either the city or on the commission to take that step once a month to update those buildings and add the utility information that you get once a month from your bill. So it's very easy, I did it several times, so. Also, thanks to Tara Means, one of the supervisors, Benjamin was my other supervisor this summer. She was a really great help acting as kind of a liaison with Green Umbrella in getting Milford involved in the 25 Communities Project, which will kind of unlock several resources that Milford will be able to use throughout the year. And that includes a grant tracking spreadsheet that Green Umbrella tracks and updates and will help Milford qualify or apply for. It'll also unlock expert consultations and things like that that can help move Milford forward and help with, again, cost savings is a big thing, or finding funding to do the projects that we want to do. So then, looking ahead, one of the most important opportunities I think there is, is to establish a sustainability plan and a sustainability coordinator role, which, those aren't cheap things, but the great news, especially for the sustainability coordinator role, those positions usually pay for themselves within a decent timeline, as long as they're planned correctly and done right. And so the next year or two is, the commission will be working on kind of building the case for that role, finding the low-hanging fruit and the opportunities that someone in that position can make to make it pay for itself when that position comes to fruition. So, just to conclude, I hope that all the work that I did this summer and that the commission is doing gets people in Milford, including yourselves, excited about this and excited about sustainability work happening in Milford. Because it's not just about protecting the environment, it's about protecting the residents, like I said, like heat vulnerability. But it's also helping strengthen the community and prepare for the future. One of the things with heat especially that I find startling when I heard it from Green Umbrella is that currently there's like nine days a year where the heat gets over 90 degrees, and by 2050, which is only 25 years from now, didn't realize that, seemed like a long time. But it'll be around 30 days instead, and that'll be more days that 65-year-olds and older are at risk of heat-related illness, and we don't want that. So, just preparing for the future, it's a big point. So, thank you again for the opportunity to be in Milford and work here. Everyone I've met and talked with has been super welcoming, and so I think you have a community that you should be really proud of. Their, their passion for the community and love for it is very contagious. I found myself caring about Milford so much, and I was disappointed that I hadn't kind of discovered Milford, even though I've studied at Xavier four years prior to this, only 20 minutes away. So I'm glad I discovered it through this opportunity, and I'll be coming back. So, thank you so much, and if there's any questions, I'll take them.
Questions?
Thank you.
We appreciate your dedication and hard work this summer and all that you did. Thank you very much.
Jackson, I do, since, is that survey still available somewhere? Like if somebody just heard about it?
Yes, so it is still up. It's been posted on the city's social media page, and I think on a couple of Milford, like, neighborhood groups. But I'm sure we can coordinate getting it to people if they need it to.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, our last presentation is the Milford REIT Study. Welcome.
Do you want like a hard copy?
We have, we all have.
We have, thank you.
We all have one.
Jackie, I think that's the one I sent you. That's what you printed off is what he's going to present. So, I don't know if you have that on the flash drive or not. It might be on there.
I believe you're the best.
Not there, never mind.
We love technology. Here it comes. Almost. There we go, skip that. Yes, we do. There it goes. Welcome.
There you go.
Alrighty, so I'm Scott Hadler with Raftellus. We have prepared a REIT study for the water sewer and stormwater utilities. I've been working with Benjamin over the past few months to put this together, and I've prepared a summary for you all to go over our findings and, and kind of where we're headed with the utilities. And feel free to interject with any questions or anything as I'm going through. So first, just wanted to talk through the goals of our study and kind of the steps that we took. So ultimately, wanted to provide a roadmap to look at where the utilities are headed, where they are currently, and where they're headed, and how can we get there from a financial standpoint. So some key things for that, looking at the transfers from the general fund to support the operations of the water and sewer utility, and looking at how we can effectively remove that subsidy that's currently in place there. Keeping pace with the rising costs and costs associated with capital improvements, as we've seen over the past few years, and we'll show it on a graph on the next slide, costs have, have really increased with utilities, even more so than people have seen with general inflation. So the cost to run the utilities has increased significantly since about the 2020 timeframe. And lastly, maintaining the system assets, so keeping current, replacing assets, being proactive as opposed to reactive with the capital improvements needed for the utilities. Next, looking at defensible rates and charges to support these objectives, so looking at the current rate structure and adjusting those to support those long-term needs. And then lastly, the financial objectives as well, looking at the cash reserves and debt service coverage. So, going to talk through the next few slides, which take a look at the different cost centers of the utilities. So there's really three or four main components. There's your operating costs, there's going to be your day-to-day costs, salaries, chemicals, benefits, materials and supplies, those different items that go into on a daily occurrence for the utilities. And that's what the graph we have here shows. So you can see since 2022, there's been an increase significantly on the water side. And one thing to note on that is a large portion of that is attributed to the Lime Lagoon cleaning and having that occurrence done more frequently. But you can see, and I wish we had a couple more years there going back, but that trend of increased operating costs and going forward as well, and what we're expecting in the future for those operating expenses. Next, looking at your capital improvements, these are going to be the large annual expenses, maintenance, repair-type items that are recurring in nature or day-to-day type items. So what we looked at here is kind of the current status and what's needed to effectively maintain the assets of the water sewer and stormwater systems. So you can see over this six-year period, kind of starting and ramping these costs up. So 2030 is ultimately where each of these utilities needs to be with these different amounts in order to properly maintain the system assets and have the dollars available to pay for those improvements as needed. So what we've done in order to get to that point is slowly phased those up, and you'll see the reasoning for that in a few slides to help mitigate those initial increases needed in those first few years, to help phase those rates in over a multi-year period with more gradual increases each year, as opposed to large upfront increases. So next, one big item with water and sewer is, as I mentioned, they're currently receiving transfers from the general fund to help essentially fund the operations of the water and sewer utility. So for 2025, it's $863,000 that's being transferred to help pay for these costs. So, one goal of this was to look at how we can essentially remove these subsidies over a multi-year period, because again, if it was to all be in that year one, there would be a large increase needed to help bridge that gap. So that's what we've done here, is kind of phased out those subsidies. So it's going from $863,000 in 2025 down to $515 in '27, and ultimately, zero in 2030. So what this does on the bottom line there, so those dollars essentially will be saved in the general, or be retained in the general fund rather than going out to the water and sewer utility. So by the end, you'll have about $1.1 million annually of additional dollars within your general fund as a result of making the utilities self-sufficient. So, while there are going to be increases here, it's allowing those dollars to be utilized in the general fund as well. So now looking at the plan that we've put together. So first, looking at water, so this is a five-year period, starting in 2026 going to 2030. So as I mentioned, this multi-year period, and as we looked at operating costs, capital improvements, the general fund, all these different levers, and slowly phasing these different items, that's what this has resulted in here and the rate increases that are shown. So, one thing to keep in mind, offhand, I don't remember the exact number, but I think it's been a few, a few rate increases over the past 20 or 30 years or so. So what that's resulted in is, as the cost to operate these utilities continue to increase year over year, and revenues, with the exception of growth, are maintained constant, kind of falling behind when it comes to recouping the dollars needed to run these systems. So specifically looking at water in this first one, 2026, we have the dollar increase shown there, and this is on a bi-monthly basis, so that's, the utilities are billed every two months. So this is going to be on a two-month period, the impact here, and the impact shown over this five-year period. So you can see it's still a little heavier in those first few years. We tried to smooth that out as much as possible, but without doing, or leaving the utility short in terms of dollars needed to run the system. This is really what it's boiled down to here. And at the same time, it's allowed cash levels to be built up to minimal, or minimum recommended levels, because right now, cash balances are extremely low. So building those up to be able to maintain and fund improvements that are needed as they come due, as opposed to having to take out loans or whatever it might be when that time comes. So additional savings there as those cash balances are built up and can be utilized in the future as well. Same situation with sewer, looking out of that five-year period, and the resulting impact there. Any questions on water and sewer?
Now, this, these rates are based off of us existing today with the existing $863,000 that we transfer. All right. If we were to put more money from our transfer, that could affect this. Basically, we are sitting on, what's our, uncovered?
If I can interrupt you, we'll get to that. That's at the end.
Okay, it is at the end.
It is at the end. Sorry, I know you get excited, but yeah, if you don't mind, if we can just wait till the end.
It's at the end, okay.
Okay, so next, looking at stormwater and trash. So one thing I forgot to mention, so right now, the trash fund is operated within the general fund. So, and it's currently, I believe, at a deficit of about $300,000. So essentially, the general fund is also subsidizing the trash there as well. So one thing we've done with this plan is, the stormwater has healthy cash balances, so what we've done is essentially transferred the trash operations into the stormwater fund in order to allow that stormwater fund to use those cash balances to help operate to help operate trash as we increase those rates in order to get that self-sufficient as well. So those are additional dollars, again, that will be kept within the general fund as well. So again, while these rates are going up, there are additional dollars that are being kept within the general fund that can be used towards how you all would see fit. But stormwater, again, we have the increases here and really minimal on stormwater. And the main point there is you can see the cash balances, again, dropping there. Still at a healthy balance for a stormwater utility in the year 2030. However, that is allowing the trash to slowly increase those rates over that five-year period as opposed to much larger increases that would be needed upfront. So how these all come together, have the graph here of the four different utilities and what that looks like on a bi-monthly basis, assuming an 8,000-gallon usage every two months. So again, those larger increases in the first two years, with all four utilities looking at about $27, again, on a bi-monthly basis for those first couple of years, and then dropping down after that. So overall, over the five-year period, about 11.2% each year. One thing we'd like to show is this comparison graph. And what this looks at is where your rates are currently, which is the second bar there on the left, and where they're headed in regards to communities nearby and similar-sized communities as well. Again, it's not a perfect graph because every system's different. Every system has different needs. Some have a lot of improvements that need to be made, or much older systems, some are much newer. So, and also, everyone is always increasing rates at different times, and this is just one snapshot. So looking at where your rates are currently, again, on a bi-monthly basis, at about $145,000 at the lower end compared to these other communities. And then with the rate increase for 2026, that's shown still at the lower end of this comparison here. And again, it's a snapshot. I know some, if not most, or all of these are currently going through rate studies or certainly will be in the next year or so. It's a tough time in the utility world as inflation has really taken a toll on the cost to operate. Any questions so far? All right, so now to kind of touch on your point that you had mentioned. We looked at other things we can do to help reduce this rate impact. You know, what I've shown and what we've, not necessarily recommended, but what we've currently shown as a proposed solution is kind of that base level of what can be done and how we can help get these utilities to be current with their operating expenses and other items as well. So these other things we can look at and are currently looking at, as mentioned, looking at additional transfers from the general fund in this, you know, the next year or so to further help reduce that initial first, second-year increase. So we've looked at, you know, additional $500,000 and what that impact is. And it really cuts that first phase about in half, that first increase. So in the end, it's the same rate because it's not a recurring revenue stream for the utility. It's a one-time cash infusion, but it does help minimize and help make that first-year impact minimal or less impactful for the ratepayers.
So using that, I guess, I'm dollars and, you know, talking dollars. You say reduce and halve just for that one year. And again, this is something that we need to be able to explain to our residents of what we're increasing, why we're increasing it, and what the benefit of that increase is going to be to them. So with that being said, is there the sheet, or am I just going to say that instead of $14, I'll use the dollar increase on the water, it would be $7?
Yes, that is correct, on the water.
Okay. But then 27 would still be the 17. All those would remain the same, correct?
Roughly. It would be, so it gets kind of tricky. As we reduce that first year, it helps us reduce, or I guess, smooth out those other years as well. So it's, I guess, from a percentage standpoint, that second year is reduced slightly as well. And then the third year has actually increased a little more. So it's not a big drop. It's a slower, steady drop or smoother.
And then, would you say then, with that infusion of the money, the overall by, would that change then? The, what was it, the 247 projection?
It would not change that final rate. It would just smooth those phased-in rate, those annual increases. It would smooth those out a little more to make it a little more palatable each year.
If I may, just to bring more awareness to that 500,000, where we got that number, we budgeted at the beginning of this year over $1 million to the water tower because the water tower was 4.4. We received a $3 million grant from the state, which left a difference of 1.4 million. We budgeted for that, but then we received funding through a loan for that. So we are up in terms of our budget, a little over $1 million. So that's where we got that 500,000, just to bring clarification of that.
Well, and I also want us to be cognizant that that $1 million is our residents' money. So we are putting that money back into that fund to help alleviate some of the money that our residents are going to have to pay. And I think that's, I can't emphasize enough how important that is to, because we can't be sitting on a pile of cash, basically, for layman's turn, and expect our residents to pay significantly more while we maintain a very healthy cash fund. So I would like to look at it a couple of different ways, whether we continue that type of influxion, maybe not at that high rate, but something along that rate to be able to reduce the amount our residents are paying. Because I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it's fair that we, as the city, collect more money than, you know, I love to have healthy reserves and we operate fiscally responsible. But it's not fair to our residents that we are sitting on money and we're expecting them to keep paying more and more money for this. With that being said, the garbage has always been a contention. And the fact that we have money in our stormwater sewer fund, and I know we're going to get to this later, and I'm not blaming our, you know, he's coming in behind the eight ball, but we have deferred projects, stormwater, you know, they've mentioned Cleveland, they've mentioned Garfield, they've mentioned Gage, all these projects that we've known about, and we haven't done a darn thing to fix them. We need to fix them. We need to get them on the books. And whatever money we're going to use that we're going to save, we need to make sure that those projects are funded so that our residents are getting a value for what they're paying. I haven't done anything. I don't want applause. I'm just getting that out there that as we do this rate, we, as council members, should be very cognizant that we have some ability to help alleviate some of these increases. That's all.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of part of this rate study is to look at how do we fund those capital improvements several years from now? Because to your point, coming in behind the eight ball, I don't know even if we wanted to do those things up until this point. I don't think the money was there, right? So that's part of this rate study. And to your point, yes, we have to be very careful with our citizens' money. But that is part of this study is to make sure that we can fund those things that need to happen.
Unfortunately, the increase in rates has been pushed down the road so long.
20 years.
That now it's so needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be hit. I just want us all to be, and I think our residents deserve to know that we are trying to eliminate, you know, it's going to be a hard impact, let's face it. Anytime we have to pay more money, anyone who's got their energy bill lately have seen these increases. So it's, to your point, all the costs have gone up. But I just want us all to make sure that we are looking at ways that we can minimize these increases as much as possible. That's all.
Any other questions?
No, I'm really glad that we did this.
It's long overdue.
It's long overdue. It's great information to take us into the future. So thank you.
So just as a follow-up, let me cut you off, Scott. What we're going to do is we'll run the numbers in terms of the $500,000 transfer to water and sewer as a one-time for now. And then the salary allocations, which I don't think you've gotten to yet, not to jump ahead of you, but we've started our budget conversations, which is in my manager's report. And, well, I don't think there's one set thing for all the employees. You know, we've got some employees that might be paid 8% out of sewer, 21% out of water. There's not really, I mean, a lot of it goes off of what percentage of their duties are in each department is how you can sort of separate that. But we want to look at that and determine if we can spread some of the costs in other departments. But I don't want to steal Scott's thunder, so I'll let you take it.
You're fine. No, you hit perfectly on that second point there. So that's another thing, looking at, see if there's costs that can be shifted within the utilities or outside of the utilities, whatever it might be. Looking at infrastructure improvement fees, you know, additional ways to generate dollars to help pay for these projects, this infrastructure replacement as it comes due. And then lastly, I mentioned on that first line graph, the lagoon cleaning and how that's increased costs quite a bit. So looking at the optimal frequency of that as well and different maintenance-type items, really determining what the proper amount needed is on an ongoing basis. So a few things there as ways to kind of shift what we've shown. And again, that was kind of a base model of getting the utilities whole. So next step is looking at things we can be doing to help reduce that impact.
And you talked about, the information I like to, you know, we've been informed over the years that, you know, we have to do X, Y, Z. Will you be able to tell us how much lime we can have in that lagoon before we really have to empty it? And those type of things so that, would that be information that we're going to receive?
Yes, so we're working on that now. This has sort of been, what was the first year we started doing this Lime Lagoon? Do you remember? It was within the last four or five years, probably sooner than that. So that's what we're trying to figure out now, is how often we truly need to do that, considering that's a $200,000 cost. Without that, on a yearly basis, that would significantly help those increases.
Without hampering any operations that we have, correct?
Correct, yeah. And if, I mean, once Scott gets done, we'll go back to the slide. But you look at what is, I think we had $150,000 in water capital and $125,000 in sewer. Okay, 150, 150. So you look at State Route 28, that was about a $300,000 replacement. And that short manhole, I think it's 300 feet. So you take that into account. We had to spread that across four or five funds, if not more, just so we could pay for that. So when we talked about leveraging incentives, grants, and loans, that's where we're at. We don't have the cash balance to pay for those projects. And we also have other capital improvement needs other than just repairs and water line replacements. So that's why we've tried to take the approach of, we want to mitigate the increase as much as we possibly can. But by doing that, that effectively means we have to subsidize it through the general fund, any projects, grants, loans, or incentives. That's the only way we can pay for it.
And I'm okay with that.
Sorry.
You're fine. That pretty much wrapped up everything, everything that I had. This is just kind of a quick summary. But I think all the points have already been touched on. So that's all I had. So if there's any additional questions, happy to answer.
Thanks for bringing a big crowd.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Very impressed, to say the least.
All right, so that takes us to our public comment section, but I'm going to have a quick request. I know that most of you are here about downtown parking. I think I read 55 emails today, which is wonderful to hear your thoughts and your responses. If you can give us like five more minutes, we're going to get to our committee of the whole, and we're going to move that to the first thing on the list, so we'll discuss it. Because there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I think hearing our discussion might help alleviate a lot of your questions and concerns. So if you can wait till we discuss it and then come up and comment, we'll be happy to hear from you then. All right, so that takes us to safety services. Mr. Vlado? Quick rundown on the meeting, quick summary.
Let's see, where is that here?
Yeah, meaning is, oh, you cut me off toward here.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, let's see where my notes are.
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Vlado.
Yeah, I got to get to them.
Do you want Mr. Gunderson to go first?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Gunderson with city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council should have my report. There's quite a few bullets on there. When you have a meeting once a month, I may be able to really stack it in. So two things I really wanted to discuss is, we kicked off our sort of mid-year budget that will be teeing up our end-of-the-year budget for fiscal year 2026. So we're excited to get that underway, and we should have some items kicked over to council here soon. The city met with several companies to discuss pickleball courts in town. We'll be discussing this later tonight regarding the state capital budget and my intent to apply for money for pickleball courts, so we're pretty excited about that. Let's see, we did a final round interview for the police department. I think it was a pretty good process. I don't know if chief's going to touch on that, but I'm very excited for the new applicant to start. We've got a really strong team here, so I'm excited to offer another person that opportunity to join our team. And then lastly, the city staff will be kicking off a 2025 health initiative, starting August 29th. This is a 90-day health initiative, and I'm excited about that because what that, health is important to us. But getting out of your comfort zone and growing as an individual, both personally and professionally, I think is extremely important. So I'm excited to get moving on that, and it'll be pretty fun. We've got weekly competitions. We'll be in groups. We'll be able to have just some good accountability partners. And I've got a really strong panel, a little advisory committee that gives me lots of good ideas. And so I'm lucky for that. So unless there's any questions, that is all I have for now.
All right, thank you very much.
And I have, yes, apologies. All right, we held a safety services committee meeting on July 28th. Meeting was called to order at 10:00 a.m. The present were myself, Mayor Evans, and Brad Price, along with numerous staff, including city manager, police chief, system police chief, our code enforcement officer, and our executive assistant. We also had a couple of visitors. The Kip, Mary and George were in attendance. We made a motion to appoint me as the committee chairperson, continuing in my role, seconded by Mr. Price. All voted yes. We had the proceedings from our last September 12th safety services meeting adopted, and we approved those. We had a very informative discussion about sound. We opened the discussion discussing the 2020 sound ordinance that set regulations for amplified sound to stop at 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Tuesday evenings, and end, I think it's Thursday, it should be Thursday, Sunday through Thursday. And then ending at, originally it was 12:00 a.m., and then we moved it in 2022 to 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and then 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. And that is the current ordinance as it is today. Ms. Kip came and distributed copies to the committee members of a letter that was given to the city manager and council back in 2023. We answered numerous questions about their concern, and they were discussed at length. We did ask if she had any suggestions for a reasonable solution, and she answered that she really couldn't answer that question. Mr. Kip, George Kip, came up and discussed that he'd lived here for 21 years and that they have difficulty being outside every Friday and Saturday nights. And Mr. Mary Kip then stated again that there's some discussion about talking with the distillery about shortening the hours, and she says that's not the answer. We need a sound ordinance that can be effective and enforceable because other than you... Discussing the performance standards for a district was also brought up. There was also a letter from a resident, Ms. Lyons, Debbie Lyons on High Street submitted a letter in trying to request that we look at and change the sound ordinance. Chief Mills stated that he would instruct one of his officers to go out and get sound readings, which we'll talk about that here later on, that from the times, not just during when they're playing music, but what the basic ambient sound is and how that affects the different areas, whether or not there is a band playing on top of the distillery or not, and we'll discuss that here later on. We went into great discussion and that we agreed that at the committee hold tonight that we would discuss a plan and we would entertain any further action on this ordinance. With no additional business, Mr. Price made a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:45 a.m. All voted yes.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights from my July report. Several members are studying for their FAA Part 107 exam to be added to our newly formed drone unit. As of right now, we have three volunteers that are on the team, but we're working on adding officers to that. In this month's edition of a new scam I had not heard of, an elderly female sent $100, I'm sorry, $1,000 in Apple gift cards to become an FBI agent. Fortunately, Officer Newmeyer worked with the bank and the credit card company to get the victim reimbursed, but just a PSA, it takes a little more than $1,000 to become an FBI agent. Unfortunately, Officer Brandon Clark resigned to take a position in the private sector and Officer Julie Liming finished her career on July 31st, which means we are hiring again. So please, if you know anyone that's interested in law enforcement and they either have to be certified or in the academy, but please reach out to us. I'd be happy to explain our process. It's on our website, it's on our Facebook page. If you're not currently working full-time, you're not eligible for lateral entry, you have to go to nationaltestingnetwork.com and take the test. And lastly, our citizens police academy starts two weeks, so we're looking forward. You have a good class this year, so.
A lot of potential people here for the class.
Yeah, I think this session's closed, but if you're interested in next year's citizens police academy, please reach out. It's the world's best kept secret.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to fire and EMS. No, no report? Okay, no report, that's perfect. That'll help shorten things up. That takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion to open?
Executive session.
Oh, executive session, you're going to read that.
So are we going to do that after the committee? Okay. So then I would like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter for the sole purpose, the consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee or regulated individual unless the public employee, official, licensee or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
And this will be at the end, right? Second?
No, he wants to do it now.
Okay.
Can we do the parking first and then go to the executive?
Sure.
Okay. So they've been waiting a long time, so let's skip that. We're going to do the parking first before we go to executive session.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the executive session? Request?
We didn't vote.
All right. All right, so do I have a motion to open the committee of the whole meeting, please?
Yes, so moved.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
Okay, so we will move to the topic of paid parking downtown. Just a little background, I guess. Luckily, Milford has grown over the last several years, so we get comments, complaints all the time about there's no parking downtown, there's no parking downtown, we need to fix the parking. So we have, over the years, the last couple of years, looked at several options, parking garage, you're talking 20-plus million, I believe, plus we have to have a place to put it. We've met with golf cart companies to try to help like shuttle people to parking. That's also very expensive. Since last April or so, we started talking about paid parking downtown. One misconception I've read a lot lately is parking meters. We are not putting parking meters downtown. The two areas we are considering would be the Harvest Market parking lot and the bank parking lot. So we were lucky a few years ago to gain that extra parking there. This is just in the discussion phase. The biggest concern, we're not trying to make money, that was another misconception out there, we are trying to help turn over those lots, especially on like Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. A lot of employees park there, so a lot of those spaces are taken up for eight-plus hours at a time, which then creates parking problems for everybody else. So we're just trying to find solutions to help people park downtown. The company that we met with, he gave a presentation at the last meeting, I believe, very flexible. We can, we set the rates, we set the hours. So we even discussed at the last meeting, like we would never charge someone to pay to park to run in and get a coffee or, you know, there's probably like an hour limit, you could park for the first hour for free, all kinds of things we discussed. So that's where we are at this point. So counsel, comments, concerns, questions?
I feel I owe the community a bit of an apology because I think the parking meter misconception comes from a statement I made in May, where when we were looking at this proposal as a potential solution for parking, I encouraged us to also just look into what it would look like to meter spots on Main Street, not with the intent of actually putting meters there, but if we're looking at solutions, I like to have all the information of a possible solution. So I feel like that got twisted, so to the community, I apologize for that getting out there, because again, I feel like that came from that comment in May. That's on me and I'll do a better job trying to communicate where I stand and kind of what I'm looking at in meetings in the future, because I owe that to you guys. So just wanted to put that out there.
And I would also like to echo the mayor's comments that we have looked at this, I've looked at other, we've looked at other communities, the pros and cons, and we hear you, we hear you. I applaud you all for being out here today to, Mayor and the rest of our colleagues, you know, we want your input. We certainly, it's not, doesn't go on deaf ears. With that being said, and what I've seen personally, and I speak for me and me and only, I am not in favor of us doing anything at this time, because we hear from you, we've heard from you, I've heard from you. So if that's going to help alleviate anything, I certainly don't think that this is something that is going to be well-taken. I do believe, to the mayor's point, that we need to look at all options. And this was one option we considered. Again, it wasn't to penalize our residents, it wasn't to make it difficult to find a parking spot, it was really to help that area continue to thrive by having some parking that people had to pay for so that it would encourage a turnover, because we see it all the time, when employees park there or, you know, you're down there for eight, 10 hours and you park your car in those parking lots, it hinders people from coming into our community and, you know, people always compare us to downtown Loveland of how hard it is to find a parking spot in downtown Loveland. They have both free and paid parking. And it works. We don't have that much free paid parking auxiliary, so for them, it works. So again, I'll, to our vice mayor's point, I'll apologize if we've communicated that we were going to put in anything that would hinder your ability to go downtown on a regular basis and park for free.
What we'd love to hear is suggestions for solutions from you. We've talked about also possible wayfinding signs. We actually have a lot of parking, but it's two, three blocks away, which people don't realize, they probably walk that far when they go to Kroger's to get milk. It's probably the same distance, but in perception, they think it's so far away. So part of it is maybe signage and where to park. I've also encouraged Mr. Gunderson to maybe have a meeting with all of the downtown business owners to maybe talk about some solutions for where their employees can park. It's hard when the business owners park right in front of their business or in those lots that, you know, and they're working an eight-hour shift, because then those spots don't turn over and like, Mr. Velardo said, that creates an issue. So that's all we're doing is looking for solutions. So the 55 emails I got today all said, you know, vote no, but like, then help us, what's some solutions or ideas you have? We'd love to hear that also. So I would like to.
Yes, please. I also wonder too, if we could do a better job when we set out the agenda for city council meetings, because it shows all potential resolutions and ordinances on the agenda. So that could give some people the impression that it's a done deal and we're going to vote on that. So maybe we put an asterisk on there and say, you know, pending passage in committee. Because again, tonight, this has to pass out of this committee to even make it to the point where it would be an ordinance. And I don't know how the rest of you are going to vote. In hearing Mr. Velardo and myself, I know that's at least two no votes already, I'm assuming, I don't want to put words into your mouth. But I think that again, kind of some of the myths, some of the misunderstanding in the community that this was already a for sure thing comes from the way that we put information out there. And if we could let people know that first, we're going to talk about it, it's not a done deal, which again, that's a great opportunity for you all to show up like you did tonight. This community continues to come out when things that matter to them are on the line, like for example, Clertoma Park and that discussion, and again, tonight. So again, you know, we hear you, but I think if we put out there that it's not a done deal, that can help combat some of that, well, they've already made up their mind type of narrative that's out there. Because I think we just need to do a better job as a city as communicating with ourselves.
Our process has changed, where we used to have our committee meetings separate, like we did have the safety services committee and people would come to those meetings. Now we have that as committee of the whole right now. So we discuss it, you know, if we don't all agree, we don't send it on to a vote, it's not going to happen tonight. So I would like to open up the floor for your comments or suggestions. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'll go first. I'm Brian Hirsch. I'm a principal owner of Nation Kitchen and Bar, 203 Mill Street, I think. So I didn't come here with a solution, but standing there, you know, just kind of, I'll spitball, put it out there. If you like it, you can take it. Love the idea of turnover with those lots out there. We've observed the same thing you guys have observed as well. You know, if you go to a paid park situation, you've got to enforce that. Why not do, you know, two-hour parking or four-hour parking from eight to six, free parking, you turn it over. Again, yeah, you're going to have to enforce that, but either way, you'd have to enforce it even if you had the paid park. So then you kind of leave it open-ended after six o'clock or so when the normal workers are kind of getting off. It's kind of the best of both worlds. Anyway, then you avoid the pay-for-parking issue, which honestly, for our business would be pretty devastating. We've got other locations and we've seen at least one other location where they've tried to implement pay-for-parking and it's been not successful, first of all, and we've seen a huge negative impact on our business. You know, diners, when they're thinking about eating out, whether it's consciously or subconsciously, it matters to them. They want to have free, readily available parking and that's how they make their decisions, again, subconsciously or consciously. And so, yeah, I mean, that's anecdotal, I can't quantify it for you, that's just what we've observed, okay? And so from our standpoint, it matters, you know? The restaurant industry, we operate on pretty thin margins as it is. Those margins have become skinnier since COVID, with disruptions in the labor market, increase in food costs, et cetera. So this will be hard for us and make it harder for us little guys to compete with the big boys, you know, the Texas Roadhouses of the world, with their football-sized, football-field-sized parking lots. And so, yeah, I would just urge you to consider other solutions besides pay parking. You know, we've got a great, unique mix of businesses down there in Old Milford and I think we need to preserve that mix and not, you know, pull the rug out from underneath us.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, can I ask you a question? Do you mind? I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here, I apologize. One of the things we hear about, and since, you know, you, how many employees do you have in any given day, would you say? Approximately, how many employees?
On a day?
Yeah. How many employees?
Or a shift, maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe 15 to 20.
So 15 to 20. One of the things we hear is your employees are competing with your customers for parking. Do you have a solution that we can help you with or something, where we could find 15 or more parking spots for your employees so they're not utilizing the parking, because I assume you don't regulate where your employees park?
No.
You know? So they take up, and again, those are some of the complaints we as a city hear that we try to combat, and that's where this kind of paid-for parking. So if you can help us.
Yeah, and I think that would be a great conversation for us to maybe have offline, because you're right, we don't regulate where they park. We've got options, they park in the pit, they park in the free lots, they park in different places. But yeah.
Is that what you call that, by the way? The pit?
The pit, that's what I call it.
It's the best kept parking secret.
I know. Don't say that too loud.
Yeah. No, no, and again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. But again, those are the questions that we are trying to answer.
I'd like to have a meeting with downtown businesses.
Love to be a part of that. And we're open to suggestions as well, because we want to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem.
Because 15 parking spots close to your business is pretty important.
Yeah.
You know, and if your employees are parked there, obviously they're there for six, eight hours or more.
But we'd rather be turning those spots over for customers rather than having.
Correct, that's my point.
It's typically Thursday, Friday, Saturday, like it's this.
So if we could somehow come to, you know, and I think that's where the city manager wants to have a meeting with all the players down there. So, and I think, you know, just 15 spots with you and we compound that by all residents like yourself.
Well, and your building in particular. So I own Villa Sanctuary on the corner of Main and Garfield, and I can tell you, weekly I have people complain about the parking, not geared towards you, but I also was on planning commission for three years and I have people repeatedly asking me how that building got approved with 11 parking spaces. So you've got you, Sinister Distillings taproom, an art gallery that can be rented out and has 120 people occupancy and a rooftop bar, all those employees, and I watched, I mean, I can see that parking lot from my store, so it's not just your employees, but that is part of the conversation I'd like, and Benjamin, HMA, we'd happy to facilitate that with the businesses. I think a lot of the problem is employee parking, for full disclosure. And I get it, they don't want to walk, it's late, whatever, but we are looking for solutions and we welcome your suggestion.
Would love to be a part of that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher, George Salon. I actually have my own parking, but I came down because I heard what's happening today, thought that was terrible, the meters and so forth, but what you've just said about the two-hour turnover, I like the two-hour turnover, because I have people parked in my salon all day, eight hours. But the two-hour turnover, I think it's great. I'm content. Didn't sound like anything I heard today, so I'm going to leave. I actually have my own parking lot, I'm just concerned about the other businesses around me. So it sounds, sounds good to me. So thank you guys.
Anybody else like to make a public comment?
Or creative solutions.
Yeah, or solutions.
We welcome that.
So I'm Rick Block and I have a couple of properties in downtown historic Milford. And I think after hearing what the council has already told us that we didn't know before we came in here, was appreciated and that there's not going to be any meters on Main Street. But I think we've created a problem, and I think I take a lot of responsibility for it, that we have a very vibrant downtown Milford. And so I think controlling the turnover, and now that we've got the people from the nation here saying that, and I think we've all brought it to our attention now, that the employee parking could be a big, big, big part of the problem. So we have Tarrell Park, maybe after hours, that has probably 40, 50 spots there and stuff, so that could be a solution, that the employee parking could be at Tarrell Park. But I think if otherwise, I do think that a parking fee to make money would also be maybe something just for maybe Friday at noon till Sunday at noon in your lots, in the ones that the city owns, those city-owned lots, not on the street. But I think that could be something that could be real for turnover, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Stephen Oliver. I live at 547 Garfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Steven Oliver. I live at 547 Garfield Avenue. Basically, I'm here to speak directly to the citizens today because the council and the mayor are already aware of what's happening. I have been sort of led down a rabbit hole and found out that the city is planning on using our public funds to maintain a project for FC Cincinnati. Specifically, they're going to be building a synthetic turf soccer field on the historic Riverside Two Park where the Frontier's Festival is at. It isn't going to be equal and fair use to all. It actually, there's a provision in the memorandum of understanding, which I have a copy for everyone here today who would like one, to see exactly the language that's being used to privatize a parcel of public land in a historic park. I'm summoned here today because frankly, it upsets me and I'm a little disappointed with some of the conduct and efforts. I love the economic development of Milford. I was here for the Cleratoma issue. We do not need to alter a historic park. But the point I'm making is a principle of government. They didn't solicit the approval of the people. Public lands that we own, they did not ask us for our permission. All the while, FC Cincinnati is going to be allowed to advertise their foundation and their third-party sponsors on our public land in a peaceful park that has been preserved since nineteen hundred. I received validation about the park's history. The park was founded in nineteen oh four by our ancestors, if you'd like to call them that. Many uses have been on that park, different recreational activities. However, now they're trying to make it permanent that FC Cincinnati have a second turf field in Milford on a historic park again, that we have a lot of our beloved traditions and festivals. However, I'm sorry if I'm speaking loudly. We are in an era of rapid change and development, but there are a lot of these changes that are contrived. They don't arise naturally, they're actually solicited. So, essentially, the location of the park or the turf field is going to be at Riverside Two Park. The funding is going to be maintained and repaired by the sole cost and expense of the taxpayers of Milford. Milford will be implementing security at the sole cost of the taxpayers to ensure that the field is used only for soccer and nothing else. To use the soccer field for anything else, you actually have to write a letter and get permission from FC Cincinnati on a park that you own. Now, when it comes to restoration and the useful life, FC is going to make Milford pay twenty-five thousand dollars ten years from now to restore the land. That's if FC Cincinnati allows us to restore the land because they are able to rebuttal its removal. They have the first right use to the field over the citizens of Milford. They get to use the field before we get to use the field because they're FC Cincinnati. The point of this project is to endorse soccer, youth, adult soccer in Milford. I argue that there is no demand for youth and adult soccer because there is Finley Ray. There is Miami Meadows that has soccer fields. There's Riverside Two Soccer Field by the baseball fields. There's open green spaces to play soccer. And then, when people are done playing soccer, the field can be converted to legitimately whatever anyone else wants to use. They're there right now doing construction on this park. And most of you probably don't even know this is happening because they didn't ask you. They didn't provide the information to you. And every time I asked for public records, I was met with repeated- now granted, the clerk is wonderful in transparency and she got the information to me when I needed it. However, I got a lot here. The records that I asked with the Motts Group in Newtown, which is going to be receiving two-hundred thousand dollars, by the way, they're in Hamilton County. So, Claremont County is not even, a business of Claremont County isn't even being supported in this project. So, when I asked and I sent the records request to the clerk asking for that information, I got an email back saying, and I assume this comes from Mr. Pacheco, who is the city attorney. He works for a huge firm.
Dinsmore and Scholl.
Sorry?
Dinsmore and Scholl.
Of course. He specializes in zoning and eminent domain. Sorry. Is it too loud? It's okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. To sum it up, he is representing the city. They are, his clients, we are not. So, he is wording these contracts to limit the fair use by the citizens of Milford on a park, again, that we own. But they sent me a letter that said, or a reply that said, "The city redacted or withheld information protected by attorney-client privilege under revised codes 149.43." However, the city manager and the Parks and Rec meeting designated this a project and is in the memorandum of understanding that it will be using public money to maintain it. So, they told me that I am not of right to know information that regards how our public money is being spent. Why is that protected under attorney-client privilege? So, I sent an appeal to the clerk and I said that this was a designated project, that it was said on record of having a two-hundred thousand dollar investment of high-grade turf to the Motts Group. It's a project for the World Cup in 2026, but it's just to support FC Cincinnati. Now, some of you may agree with this being put in our parks, but truthfully, this should not be happening unless we have a right to vote on it, in my opinion. The park has been preserved since nineteen oh four, nineteen oh four. Every councilman up on that wall, mayor, preserve that land until now. Why? Don't know. But again, I got the memorandum of understanding that said basically, "We're not going to give you the information, but we are doing this project and there's nothing you can do about it." I've been at the field for the past two days. I've stood in front of bulldozers. I've talked to public workers. The police have been utmost respectful and told me I have a constitutional right to be there to petition my government, which leads me to the petitions. I have over fifty signatures that I can give to the clerk, that the council can have. This is the petition. These are real citizens of Milford that are signing this petition. We are asking that the memorandum be dissolved, the project be halted, and that a proposed amendment that we have drafted be considered by council, which will preserve our public parks by restricting the use, sale, or occupancy by a private entity or person. I don't get why that is such a controversial. And more importantly, why are you so obsessed with FC Cincinnati? Why? In 2018, the city got sued for holding illegal meetings with FC Cincinnati, illegal meetings. They had to take classes on how to conduct public meetings because I guess at the time, they've forgotten how to. Now, here we are again. History certainly does repeat itself to the point where now, we have to entertain FC developing on our land once again, and you're not asking the people for their approval.
All right. Can you please sum it up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, another thing I want to make, these are part-time workers. All of them are part-time. No disrespect, but you're part-time. It's kind of sad how I come into a government building to talk to the mayor and, well, the mayor's not here. City council's not here. They work part-time. There's one person in the building. I tried to talk to the city manager. He's not here. The clerk was having lunch. Granted, it was lunchtime. However, he was the only one there. The point I'm making, is this a government? Why do you get to make decisions that truly affect the welfare, happiness, and peace of the people, but you get to work part-time? Here I am, twenty-five years old, and I got to be a full-time citizen, full-time worker, full-time uncle, full-time son, full-time brother. I'm trying to balance everything out. But these people get to have a part-time job.
For three hundred dollars a month.
Sorry?
Do you- For three hundred dollars per month.
Do you know what our pay is?
So, the point I'm making it though is you are serving the people. It doesn't matter what your pay is.
We are serving the people.
It is an honor to serve us.
Okay, can you please wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so-
Nobody's saying it's not an honor to serve.
So, I have this petition. There's over fifty signatures. We have the-
Thank you.
Proposed amendments.
Right, thank you.
And they don't want to hear it. They don't want to hear it. They haven't replied to any of my letters. Sorry? Yeah, got you. So, we'll be doing this a little bit more and looking into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify a couple of things? Yeah, I mean, first of all, this is, yeah, please have a seat. This is, this is by the FC Cincinnati, like Youth Academy, like their youth program. And they build these community outreach fields. So, it's over a two-hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment, I believe, in our city for the youth of Milford to play soccer. This has nothing to do with the FC team or their leagues or any of their-
It has everything to do with their team. They have the, under the contract-
You're interrupting. Please have a seat. Please have a seat.
You're being rude.
I apologize, but I think it's rude to develop on land that you didn't ask permission to develop on.
Please have a seat. We don't, we don't get permission to build playgrounds or do other improvements to our parks either. All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments about parking, please?
Donna Lucky, 910 Wallace.
You can move it down.
You can move it down.
That whole exhibit had nothing to do with the parking situation.
Correct.
It just wasted a lot of our time.
It's public comments.
It's public comments. We have to allow them to speak.
All right. And my public comment is, you just have to walk to where you want to go.
Exactly.
If anybody ever goes downtown, you don't get to park in front of a restaurant. You don't get to park in front of the stadium. You have to walk to get there.
Agree. I agree. A hundred percent.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion from council to table discussion? Oh, you have one more? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Has it, Deirdre Lilly, 48th Mound? Has it ever been approached with businesses who do have lots to pay them a certain amount to let them be used after hours so that there's not signs saying you'll be towed?
Right.
Or even down at the Legion or-
A lot of the Legion is city parking and people don't realize that. Half of that, so that's what we're saying, like, there's a lot of parking down there. But I think signage, wayfinding, like, to let people know that that's a city lot.
Because I didn't even, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the part that I think would be great for employees.
Yeah, so it would be great for employees.
Because I think asking your customers to walk from the Legion is a totally different thing than asking your employees to park and walk personally. I mean, for me, and I own a business on Main Street, my employees are the key. I don't park in front of my store.
Right, so if there was a spot, a place where the employees were made aware of that they can park, that isn't too obnoxiously far. And even, even for customers, for restaurants, I mean, if you go out to eat, like someone said, if you go out to eat downtown, I mean, obviously, it's not downtown Cincinnati. But if you go out to eat, you may need to walk a little bit. So, that's not as far to walk for some of the restaurants from there. And I was just like, like some of the other lots.
We talked to the bank. We've talked to, reached out to the bank building across from Harvest Market Lot. And I think like after hours, like, they don't tow people for parking there. I don't know if they have signs up or not.
They do have signs, but they're not going to, and they're not going to take down their signs. But they also don't tow people too.
After hours, but you have to know that.
Because as somebody who doesn't want to have to pay to get their car out of-
Right, right.
Sure.
Right.
Whatever it's called.
Impound.
Jail.
Car jail.
You know, I argue with my husband all the time. Says no parking, you can't park there, you're going to get towed. So, I mean, if there's, you know, somebody older, somebody has trouble walking and there is a sign saying you're going to get towed, they may not want to try it.
Right.
Sure.
Right. All right. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we were just talking, what if we had like a little cute little trolley that looked like a canoe or something that went from like the shopping center where La Rosa's used to be and stuff? And you could have this little trolley running back and forth.
We investigated golf carts so people could park at the Legion, but it was a little pricey. So, again, try to save tax dollars.
I think if you want to fund that.
Yeah, if you want to sponsor the trolley, we could use some sponsors. Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address.
Hello. My name's Spencer Stapp. I own Enchanted Moments. One thing I wanted to say is, I just learned about the whole parking thing like three days ago. I go to all the HMA meetings. And somebody, like three people ago, said the soccer field wasn't about parking, but if we're having a soccer field and youth games, that is going to affect parking.
It's not for games. It's just like recreational fun. And we have parking down there at the Legion, at the park.
Okay, but then, so, the parking that we're then fixing, like with the employees, but that's going to be where they park.
Well, there's a lot of spots there. Our goal is they'll come in and enjoy that field and then they'll shop and eat in downtown.
I hear that. Yeah, okay. That would be great. That would be great. If we enforce the parking in the lots, what are going to stop the employees from parking on Main Street? Because when I first came back from California, that was a big thing. We, like, the employees were kept told not to park on Main Street. So, they moved to the lots. So, then, like, if there's no enforcement about the time limits, what's going to stop anybody? You can ask all you want to park over here, park over there.
Right.
But I don't know. Other than enforcement of the times, I don't really have an answer for you. I think the Tarrell Park kind of sounds crazy because, I don't know, how are you going to ask people to walk at midnight or 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM? I don't know how well-lit it is, but going up Elm to High Street, that isn't lit well, and that's pretty close. So, just my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Hello.
Emily White, 118 Main Street. I think you guys have a brilliant solution for the wrong problem. I think, like, if you were looking at paid parking and OTR, people will go down there and spend the entire day walking through OTR. Or even in Loveland, a lot of the reason they started doing the paid parking is because people were launching kayaks down there or starting on the bike trail and people were staying. Our customers, we have a beautiful downtown, but people don't traditionally stay downtown for eight hours. The problem that I'm hearing from everybody is employee parking. So, before we really look into starting to do paid lots, I'd like to ask council and the city manager to do their due diligence in talking to the business owners and maybe trying to find a solution for employee parking first before we start looking into paid parking. All right, thank you.
Well said.
Ben Redman, 308 Main Street, I guess, aka the Harvest Market Lot. It is not my lot, by the way. Not my lot. I won't lie, I do benefit from the lot being right there. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out. As a former council member, it's always good to see when we come together about issues that matter to our community. I was here at the July fifteenth meeting. I was the only one who spoke about the parking thing. So, it's really good to see all this backup now and support because I was up here before. I think the council did a great job clarifying too, and that was my main reason for being here was to support council because I was hearing a lot of misinformation too and I was always reassuring people. So, thank you for starting the meeting by really reassuring those kind of rumors that are going around and stuff. And then also, thank you to council member Velardo for really identifying what I think the role of city council is, is to reflect the will of the people. And you said at the very beginning what the will of the people is tonight. You asked the, the main question, you know, instead of just saying against it, what kind of solutions could we possibly have? I agree with what Emily just said too. I think it's important for the city to meet with all of us business owners because we do all have employees. So, it'd be interesting to think the total number of employees that all of us employ down there that are taking up all those spots and then think of creative ways to work with it. My one suggestion was just kind of more broad, but kind of thinking of some public and private partnerships. There are some private lots on Main Street that could possibly work. You have to obviously work with the owners of those that aren't fully used. And then also, I'd like the city to really put some pressure and use their legal authority to really help move along the U-Haul Building that's just sitting there empty with a bunch of parking spots, even if it's at first just telling people to park there. And, you know, obviously, it's a private lot, but, I don't know, something like that, those are both my suggestions. So, thank you, guys. This is an age-old problem. It's not going to be solved today, tomorrow, maybe even next year, but thank you for trying to tackle it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Jonathan Jennings at 313 Main Street, Bishop's Bicycles. The parking, I think it's mainly signage because I don't know how many times we've heard people like, "Oh, I can't find parking." And then they realize we have the lot, the Legion parking lot. Nobody knows it's public. Even when we have events, nobody knows it's public parking. They think it's Legion parking. So, having signage from the far end, saying, "Hey, public parking this way." There's a little bit of, like, small signs. I think they're only this big. This is public parking and you can't see it because they're higher up. But riding bikes from there and back, I see them, but nobody moves down. Like, that lot will be completely empty, but then everybody at the other end is just full. And nobody knows that they can drive down. And then lighting, maybe look at lighting for the streets.
Yeah, that's true.
Especially at night. I've walked that street, even Main Street, I think shuts off at midnight. Some of those street lights, especially the back streets, there's no lighting at all. And then, my other issue is, we have an event in November and the soccer field is kind of making an issue for that because it's cutting off a lot of the race that we're trying to put on. Didn't know about it until today that that was being built. And right now, what they've already built is kind of dangerous. I don't know if you guys want to look into that. The rocks they used are big boulders, so walking on it, and they only have a couple of cones. But I know future stuff, stuff will come up, but-
If I may, city staff had a conversation with Steve and Stuart regarding the race. And this was something that we had discussed and we thought would be a good obstacle for the race. However, if the timeline is how it's set forth, they would be finished at the end of September. And I think that race was like October.
It's November ninth.
Even better. So, so that would effectively be taken up and would be seated. So, that, that- that hazard would be removed.
Well, according to paperwork, they have from September to November to finish it.
Yeah.
And that's, if something gets delayed, and all their construction equipment's in that field?
Certainly.
How much they're taking up, all that. Right now, what they're doing right now is, they just cut already with that pavement, whatever they put down, the big stones they put down, just took out that whole area automatically.
Yeah.
So if that's how it's gonna be left, it might be dangerous, because there are, I picked up one, it's the size of my palm.
Yeah.
Like, it's not gravel.
Yeah.
But when I talked to Steve, he was told it was gonna be a pile of dirt, but if there's all this construction equipment with, you know, a couple thousand people maybe coming in to race this race.
Right.
We won't have one parking. But even though it's on a Sunday, we shouldn't have much issue. But taking out a full section of the middle of our race, we now might not be able to have that race with that going in place, if it's not done as soon as possible, if it ends up going in.
Well, I, I think just...
And future-wise, we might have issues with even having bicycle races in Milford with that field going in. It's one of those things, I want to do this every year, so we can promote health.
Yeah. I, I think maybe just sitting down with everyone again and, and re-discussing this, because this was something that we originally brought up. And, you know, I, I even said that this is a race regarding obstacles, so this is an added obstacle. So that, maybe I didn't communicate that well enough, but nonetheless, that's the, we can still sit down and, and re-discuss it, and if we need to reconfigure stuff, then that's fine. But we'll be a partner with you on that. So if we can get that set up, I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, at least if we can postpone that, just to make sure that future events or just future stuff can happen prior to, like, you know, if we have water issues in Milford, we should be solving those and then building a soccer field currently. I would rather invest the ma, the five-year maintenance, 10-year maintenance of this field to that.
I, I think we need to make a clear distinction here. This is a donation. We, we're not paying for the $200,000 soccer field.
We're not paying for the field, yes, but we're paying for the maintenance around the field, just the park.
Part of just normal park maintenance.
Normal park maintenance, like, we pay for playgrounds.
But anything that they add to that field, the gravel, all that stuff.
They're paying for all of that.
That's all.
And there's only one-year warranty on that field, so, from the foundation.
Yeah.
So that's another issue, if that term goes bad.
Yeah, they've, they've had pre-existing fields that have lasted well into eight, 10 years, so...
But the field itself doesn't really involve us. It's how the field goes into that area. That's, if it's pushed over, pushed up, it cuts that field, because the drawings weren't really clear, especially when it's 105-foot by 145-foot field. It's three of those playgrounds, pretty much, two and a half.
No, it's not. It's a mini pit.
No, it's, it's a...
They call it a mini pitch, but it's 105 feet by 45 feet wide.
Correct.
So it's, if you take that pa, playground and do two and a half of those, that's adding into that field.
Yeah.
Hopefully, all the equipment should be gone by November.
That's what...
Yeah, they'll be finished by the end of September.
So, according to the paperwork, it's September and November they have to finish.
Thank you.
But signage for the parking.
All right, thank you.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Can I also, and I know there are a lot of people that probably still, and, sir, you'll have a moment, but also, I see a lot of people leaving. I just want to make a motion to go ahead and table the parking decision, because I think a lot of people here want to make sure it's not gonna happen. And let's just go ahead and get the motion on the table and vote on it, so that folks here can understand whether it's gonna happen or not, and they can go home. Yeah. And, sir, by all means.
We have a second. Take a vote.
And you can still speak.
Take a vote, Jackie.
And I promise, I'm not gonna talk about soccer.
Thank you. Let's have a quick, let's have a, let's have a quick vote.
So, Mr. Parrish and Mr. Velardo.
Correct.
Okay.
To table, we are...
Yes.
We're voting to table the parking discussion so that it will not be voted, it won't pass tonight, it won't be voted on, it'll be gone.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay, now you may speak. Name and address, please.
David Cale. Presently, I'm at 30 Susan Circle. I've been a resident now for 26 years, but 17 of those years were on Cass Street, where I was a neighbor of Neil Jonas.
Yes.
As I understand, when Neil passed away, he gave his property to the city, which you've made a park out of part of that parcel. I know he owned the entire riverside of Cass Street between Locust and Elm. Has anyone thought about the possibility of taking some of those undeveloped parcels that Neil donated to the city and turn those into parking spaces to help out with this problem?
There are a couple spots there now. I think to the left of those spots, we don't own that property.
But he owns all those parcels down to the river.
Right.
Can you imagine how many parking spots you can develop by clearing that land and building parking spaces?
That's something to check into.
That's my thought.
All right, thank you.
Miss you at dinner.
Good seeing you there.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Sure.
Walter Bessie. I'm at 436 High Street. First thing, they talk about soccer. Finley Ray could use a really nice esoterter field if he wanted to put a soccer place that's already maintained. The other thing about the parking, when you says that people got signs up, as a good citizen, I don't park in a place where it says they're gonna tow my car.
Correct.
So, the, the city got together with the business owners, and we put a sign, you know, after-hours parking. You know, that would alleviate any misconfusion of being allowed to park there, and it would open up a ton of parking. And I agree with him, the spot down there by the river, there's plenty of place. You could have made that whole street parking and still kept the monument in the park there, and more people could park and actually look and read what those statues say.
Right.
And the, the biggest thing on mine, being on High Street, owning it for 15 years, and living there for 10 years now, is the water, you know, and the development. Most of your builders are not held to the standards they should be for builders. I call the city and, I send me to the civil engineer about the water problems in the mud on High Street. I've been dealing with it for six years. And I said, find a guy. Well, we've warned him. He said, six warnings. At what point do we start fining these developers for not doing what they're supposed to, maintaining safety with soot fences and keeping water and mud out of our sewers that we're talking about? Because there's been a ton of mud. Garfield flooded because of the rain coming off of Wallaston down there. High Street still does it. There's mud constantly down High Street. Take those fines and give us, you know, some car washes or something. You know, do something. I mean, and same with the development there by Redknott. Come to the meeting, you want to change the zoning to make the houses closer and the lot smaller? There's three houses. They built three houses. And they said nine to 13. And now, my concern was High Street addresses. You've got one High Street address, add it, and they had to cut a groove into the house that they built, because the mud flowing into that residence's house, and it took them a month to put a soot fence up. So there you go, more mud going into our sewers, that our cost is gonna go up. It's like, I think you need to hold these developers to a standard that everybody else gets held to, you know? And the other, the last thing on the parking, what communities around here put meters out? Loveland? No. Wyoming?
We said we're not putting meters out.
I know, but the thing is, to even discuss it.
It really wasn't even a discussion.
It was never a discussion for meters.
It was just misinformation.
Well, in Florida, they do the little things you do, and there's been more corruption in that third-party breach of data and people's information getting hacked, because I'm putting in my name and address. I'm putting in, or not my address, my name, my license plate, and my credit card. And down in Florida, you constantly are getting hacked on your breach, because they don't have the security set up to prevent that. And that would be the same thing we would be doing here if that was going. But there's plenty of parking around here. If the businesses didn't have their signs up, we're gonna tow you. The Salon, All Down Hatch, all these places got plenty of parking that could be utilized when they're not open. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a public comment?
Sure.
Sure.
Tony Garner. I live at 34 Potawatomi. I've lived in Milford 58 years. I voted for you guys, and thank you for affirming that I voted for the right people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave. You can stick around.
He's been here long enough. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Rachel Richardson, 907 Center Street. First, I want to thank council for taking up the issue of parking. Parking, if anybody has lived in Milford for any period of time, you know parking has always been a challenge, and there's no simple fix. I do want to clarify some of the misinformation that has been alleged. First, I think we hear council's not installing parking meters. I think council's taking a very narrow and literal definition of parking meters. I presume that you're, you're referring to the physical parking meter that you plump change in. Would I be correct?
Correct. The people, the emails we got said we're gonna put those meters all down Main Street.
On Main Street.
That was never discussed.
Well, I, so to clarify, what has been proposed is that, that people would scan a QR code, and they would pay a QR code.
Not on Main Street.
In the two lots.
Correct.
There would be signs in which people would have to scan a QR code.
Correct.
And then they would have to, through a website that the QR code redirects them to, pay to park.
Correct.
So that is metered parking, because they are paying for a metered amount of time.
That's not what we're getting criticized for.
The 55 emails I read today, that was not their concern. That was, their concern was physical parking meters on Main Street.
Okay, but that's not what I'm referring to now.
Correct. Yeah, you're correct. The two lots, it would be paid parking.
I don't know what people have emailed you about. What I'm referring to now is, I think you're taking a very literal definition of parking meters, when...
The visual that was shown on Facebook was a visual, was a, was a parking meter. So that put parking meters in...
But the concept is still the same, and I think it, it's really confusing to tell people, council wants to install paid QR meters. A lot of people don't know what a QR code is still, you know? Parking meters is something that people know, can identify with, and it's the same concept. They are paying to park. And it is metered parking, because you are metering certain amounts of time to park. So, I also want to clarify, Ralph, you told the Fox 19 reporter a couple days ago that council's in the early stages of this, that no decisions have been made.
That's correct.
Okay. And then Lisa, you said tonight that this is just in a discussion phase.
Yeah, we've started discussing, we've been discussing parking forever, but I think April was the first time we discussed possible paid parking.
Right. Mr. Gunderson, you said at the July 15th meeting, you advised council that you could put the contract with PayParkUSA on the meeting for tonight for council to vote on. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the agenda for this meeting, that was released five days ago, lists the contract on the ordinance section.
If it comes out of committee, the whole.
Right.
Which it didn't.
But it is on the ordinance section as a possibility for...
Correct. It was a possibility, but we just voted to not
Right.
do that.
Was there any intention for council to vote on it tonight?
Not necessarily. We're gonna discuss it and decide. And then, obviously, the residents told us they didn't want to decide that, so we listened to the residents.
And the contract was in the packet that was provided to council as a consideration for you to potentially vote on tonight.
Correct. We all had that and read it yesterday. Yeah.
Do you always vote on ordinances and contracts that are you, are just in the early stages of discussions on?
No, you don't have to answer any questions. You're not on cross-examination here.
Thank you.
It's a legitimate question. If you're in the early stages of discussions on this, why would you potentially vote on it this evening?
There's no First Amendment right for you to get up and cross-examine this council. If they want to answer, they can answer, but they...
I'm asking a legitimate question as a resident.
Well, I think we should clarify, we have gone to a more open council as a whole committee. Because of that, we, we used to have committees, and we would discuss these two, three, a week before council, and then they would become. Now, in a way to include residents with what, they can't attend those committee meetings, we are doing this as committee as a whole, therefore, we have to have discussions. Now, if, and I say if, and it was no, never definite, we had to vote on an ordinance that we discussed in the committee as a whole that same night, we put it on the agenda. But that doesn't mean we were going to take it out of committee as a whole. But in fairness, so that the residents can see what potentially, potentially, we would, we would vote on, therefore, we give all that information ahead of time.
So you included it on the agenda so that you could potentially vote on it tonight, even though you're in the early discussion phase?
So I'm gonna address this, mayor and council, again. Ms. Richardson's a lawyer, so she may be talking in a way regarding a potential claim. But the first thing is, is there's a consent decree, which Mrs., Ms. Richardson is aware of, that if says, that specifically says if we're gonna pass an ordinance out of committee of the whole, we have to list that ordinance on the committee of the whole meeting. So we're doing nothing but following the consent decree. Point one. Point two is, under the rules of council passed in 2024, if you're gonna pass an ordinance, it has to be listed on the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting. So we are being transparent, we are complying with your own council rules, we are complying with the consent decree. So I don't know what we can do to be any more transparent for, for all you folks to say, here's what's potentially here, here's what we're looking at, you can look at, you can have part of the packet, we're part of a consent decree, we're following it, we're following council rules. You may come up and even comment on the contract before they vote on it. Twice, both before they vote out on the committee of the whole, and before they vote on it as council members. So there's no more transparency to be put out in front of. And let me suggest to you what would be a different result if you didn't put it on the agenda, and you just slammed it on your ordinance and said, we're gonna pass it now without it being in any packet, without being in anything at all. Imagine what the transparency arguments would be then. So we are complying with a consent decree, we are complying with the council rules. It's just that simple. And we're providing the documents so that you all can see them and comment them, comment on them accordingly. And you just saw how good government works. You give them the information, people look at it, there's been some misinformation. In fact, there's been a whole lot of misinformation. Be that as it may, council's done a nice job of cleaning it up and informing you all, and guess what? Seven, nothing. They listened, and they're not voting on it. Government, good government at work, being transparent, responding to its citizens.
Thank you.
Regardless, it was still included as an item on the, it, it was in the early stages, and there was never any intention to vote on it tonight. There was no need to put it on the agenda as an item that you could potentially vote on tonight. And Lisa, did you not tell the Fox 19 reporter yesterday that you said that council will decide if you need more time, or if you will vote on the issue this evening?
We could have. If we all seven discussed it and thought it was the best for our residents, we could have voted tonight. Could have.
Of something that you're still in the early stages of discussion.
I never said we were, I don't know if I ever said we were early stages, but we've been discussing it since April. Anything else?
So, you know, we heard a few statements this evening from Mr. Parrish, from Mr. Velardo on, you know, addressing the audience. What I didn't hear was council members deliberating and discussing among yourselves. So, you know, this, it seems like this issue went from being in the discussion phase to, you know, and yesterday, potentially could be voted on, to now council decided not to pursue a vote tonight, but yet, there's no discussion or deliberation amongst yourselves.
Because I had 55 emails I read today of residents saying, don't approve it.
And we did discuss it at the last meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, but not this evening.
And we heard people tonight talking what they wanted. So we listened to what the public asked us for.
This was before the public comment section.
But we knew why they were all here.
We all received emails.
We've seen the signs, we've read the emails.
Social media.
So I just wanted to know, at what point did council collectively amongst yourselves decide that you would not be pursuing?
We did not. We're not, we're following the sunshine laws.[1756.24]
You just watched us collectively.
Yes. Christopher just made a motion to table discussion based off of what we've been listening to.
You had already made the decision not to pursue the vote early on, before anybody even made any public comments. Maybe I have 55 emails today.
Mayor, I would suggest that this is... It's gone past.
I would also encourage one last note. You know, our city charter wisely requires two readings of ordinances at council meetings. I know council has been entering into council of the whole meetings as a de facto, so that they could discuss and pass ordinances in a single night. I would encourage you that if this does come up for a contract, this contract does come up for you to vote on in the future, please do not do it as a council of the whole. Please respect our city charter. Put it as forward, as two readings, so that the community has a genuine opportunity to offer input.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
One second. One second. For the record, council of the whole passes. It's in the charter. You can waive the two readings. All of this is compliant with the charter.
Thank you. Any further comments about parking? Otherwise, do I have a motion to close the public... Close our committee of the whole, so we can go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We're closing the committee of the whole, Jackie. Okay. Ms. Evans? Yes. Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Do I have a... Do you want to read your executive session, I guess, again?
Uh, yeah. So, I would like to make a motion pursuant to... Or to move into executive session pursuant to Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter for the sole purpose of the consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans? Yes. So, we will be returning from executive session to continue the committee of the whole meeting. A motion to reopen our committee of the whole meeting.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans? Yes. Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right. So, we will go back to number one, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is mailing the charter out to all the electors for the city. As part of the requirements, when any proposed charter changes are proposed and on the ballot, we're required to mail the charter to all of the electors for the city of Milford. So, what that is, is a estimate for that cost to do so. Seventeen thousand, two ninety-four eighty-one, which is obviously significantly above my spending limit, which is why we're coming before council.
Do we know roughly how many pages per mailing this is going to be, just for a rough idea?
Twenty-five?
Yes. Twenty-five, twenty-seven.
I would make a recommendation... Or I would make a motion that the committee recommend the law director draft an ordinance allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the mailing of charter amendments to the citizens of Milford in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-350 utility truck. This was budgeted in the Stormwater Fund this year, so this is simply allowing us to execute it. This is on state bid, which is why we're able to get around the competitive bidding.
Just a side note, I spoke to Benjamin this morning. Someone recently talked to me about a community that leases all of their trucks. So, I told him maybe going forward, that's an option to look into. They say, because every five years, you get a new truck. It saves a lot of money. So, in the future, that might be a possibility.
Dick?
And this was a budgeted item that we discussed in budget, too.
Correct.
I would recommend that the... I would make a motion that the committee recommend the law director draft an ordinance allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-350 utility truck in amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars even.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the awarding Five Points Irrigation Bid Contract. Provided in the contract, or the bid documents itself are both bids. We had two, one from Olympic Lawns and one from Vanderwist. Olympic Lawns came in at one hundred and twelve thousand, seven fifty-four, with Vanderwist coming in at one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Based off of the recommendations and similar projects, I am going to recommend Olympic Lawns. However, we have created ordinances for both in the event that council wanted to go a different route. Olympic Lawns has done work for Miami University, Xavier, Lunken. They've done significant commercial work, and they are the lowest bid. So, that is my recommendation, but with this project...
Is there any on timing either company? Is...
Sooner bear than later.
I know that has been the discussion. And now that we're heading into the fall, we'll be... You know, there's not going to be as many events in the park, which is one of the worries during the core summer months. So, that has been the discussion.
They would be able to start this fall, or they would...
We haven't been told differently as of right now.
Okay.
But that's been the discussion.
Needs to be done.
Yeah.
With that, we also discussed that of electric along that middle walkway. That would be separate from this contract and would have to be discussed at a later point. But if we're going to encourage the farmer's market to expand over there, have other events, having the electric down that walkway would be very beneficial to us. But, once again, separate from this contract.
Yes.
I would make a motion that the law director draft an ordinance awarding contract number... Contract for the Five Points Landing Irrigation Project to Olympic Lawns in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is grant funds for Five Points Landing Park. I'm going to throw this out to the group. This is simply a discussion to discuss how we can spend the remaining grant funds. I can either put this on the next agenda for the purposes of time, or we can discuss it now. But we've got about three hundred thousand dollars from state capital funding that can be utilized to Five Points... Or it can only specifically be spent at Five Points Landing Park. I'm just simply seeking ideas for that. So, I'll leave that to the group.
I think that's a pretty big ask in this discussion. Can we...
We have time to table until next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
But interesting that I have two questions that... So, you're saying we have three hundred thousand dollars that's after the irrigation project?
Correct.
Okay. And then, is there a time limit on when we have to spend the money by?
I can't give you the true timeline on that. I'll have to inquire on that. We just got it. What did we receive that last year? It didn't hit our bank account until maybe this year. So...
This meeting discussing will be okay?
Certainly. There's not an immediate rush.
That just kind of helps with ideas.
Maybe everybody think of some ideas or things you'd like to see in the boardroom.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Warning, Sand Filter Media Bid Contract. Council has seen this before. This was budgeted last year, or, excuse me, sent out to bid last year. The contract itself was grossly under bid. There was just simply not enough material to complete the project itself. Therefore, we rebid the project, and the project came in at about one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. We budgeted for the Lime Lagoon cleaning this year. This is a bigger need for us. So, instead of doing the Lime Lagoon cleaning this year, we're going to fund this project with that money instead, which is where we're getting the money for this project. But this is the right bid. We had several people... Well, actually, excuse me, three people. We had several people pull the plans, but three people bid, and this was the lowest, in my opinion, the best bid.
And could we're wrong, though? You said that money from the Lime Lagoon, but also there was the money we didn't spend last year if we awarded the contract, correct?
Yeah, that was seventy thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, it's certainly not going to cover all of it, but...
No, it's not going to cover, but we didn't spend...
There was some money in the budget.
My point is, I know it's one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but reality, it's, you know... If my math is correct, that's ninety-eight thousand dollars difference is what the increase would be, basically, is just my point. It's not that we're spending, so we did not spend the seventy last year, anyway.
I would make a motion recommending the law director draft an ordinance awarding the Sand Filter Media Bid Contract to the Henry P. Thompson Company in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars even.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is establishing a law enforcement trust fund. This was something that the auditors recommended in our last audit to create. So, within the packet itself, there is an example that our law director is able to graciously provide. But in the second document, it talks about the internal control policy, which is something that we would look to model in the uses that are allowed for it. So, this is a key component to make sure that this doesn't come up in the next audit. So, just for the clarification, some of the expenditures can be that of paying costs for protracted or complex investigations or prosecution, reasonable technical training or expertise, matching funds for federal grants to aid law enforcement, DARE programs, and other programs designed to educate adults or children with respect to dangers associated with the use of drugs, and then two other items. So, it's just a... Once again, it's a separate fund that is needed to be created to be in compliance with the audit.
I would make a motion that the law director draft a resolution establishing a law enforcement trust fund.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Stuart Land Use Zoning Code Update Contract. The city has been completing a zoning code update for the last four or five years. Due to the extent in which we've gone down this process, the previous consultants terminated the agreement simply because they were unable to honor the terms from four or five years ago. We brought in a city planner to... five years ago. We brought in a, a city planner to, to assist us with our zoning needs, but in addition to the city of Milford work, he creates zoning codes, he does, he's done our comprehensive plan. He's very educated, very knowledgeable, and he is going to be able to take us over the finish line. Under this current proposal, it's for twelve thousand. That also includes that of updating the zoning map, which would be part of this process, and is typically an additional cost. We had about twenty-seven thousand left over on the PO for this year for the zoning code. So this would be certainly far less than that, but is needed. We need to get this pushed through the finish line. I've been working on it too long, and it plays too important of a role for us as a city. So this is a separate contract. There's a lot that wasn't done that needs to be done. The goal is to get this done by the end of this year, if not very early next year. And we'll come up with a timeline in conjunction with planning commission and council to make sure we're communicating and in working within the process outlined.
I just wanna make sure I heard correctly. You said there was money left on a PO from previous versions of this, which means this money is in the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
In that case, I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance entering into a contract with Stewart Land Use for zoning code update in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to something very exciting. We have continued to emphasize, or I've tried to continue to emphasize, how great of a team we have at the city of Milford. And we had a job opening for the finance director position. The city conducted a pretty, pretty long and extensive search for that position. We hired a consultant to help us find candidates, and we had a, one candidate that rose to the top. And fortunately, this candidate was an internal person. And voting on, or for council's consideration is the finance director contract for Julie Castile. I know she's got some family members here to cheer her on. So we're contingent on council approval. We're excited to welcome her in a new role, and we're confident that she will do a great job. So laid out in the packet is, is that of what was offered, and I am looking for approval.
I would make a motion that the law director draft an ordinance confirming the finance director contract with Julie Castile. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Can I vote twice?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Welcome. I'm sorry you all had to be at this meeting, it lasted forever, but glad you're here.
Hold on, as been made clear earlier tonight, we haven't passed anything yet, so...
Vote again. Sorry. You're halfway there.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, moving on. I don't have a, really, an agenda item for this. This is, the next one is confirming a set amount for employee wage increase. That's simply an ordinance. Each year, we look at our non-union employees in conjunction with the union employees. But this one's specifically pertaining to non-union for merit-based wage increases. So I'm requesting a blanket amount of thirty-seven thousand to address the, the wages with non-union employees.
I would make a motion that the law director draft an ordinance confirming set amount for employee wage increases. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
And I know, but since Julie and her family, can we get a quick picture for her?
Yeah.
Before you guys all leave?
Julie's in the elevator.
Yeah. If it's working.
She has to come to work tomorrow.
Again, as a reminder...
I think we should get a quick picture of you.
All we've done so far is technically pass this out.
Can't leave before it.
Come up here to the front, she'll have the logo on the back. Chief Mills will take it.
Yeah. Bring your whole family up, too. Families, whoever you want.
Bring your whole family, everybody.
Well, your fan club! I'm with you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, number eleven.
All right, number eleven, Community Reinvestment Revenue Sharing Agreement Payment. Within the packet itself, we have put the, the revenue sharing agreements for council's, just friendly reminder, through some internal reevaluation of the program itself, we identified three businesses that had not been paid or billed accurately for their payroll, which means the school was not getting paid for the revenue sharing agreement that was owed. So anything above that million-dollar threshold, then that's when the revenue sharing agreement kicks in. What I did is I provided the, the letters created by our finance consult, Tom Vanderhorse, to Glenny Glass, to Castrucci, and to CMC Properties, which is Riverwalk, excuse me, it's Riverwalk Flats LLC. So you'll see the layout, or the, each year is broken apart as to what is owed. As you can see, this extends back to really 2016 and 2017. We've been improperly, improperly following this program. We are, are on a much better track now. We've, we've got the right people in place to execute on these agreements. However, there's still an amount owed to the schools. So the ordinance itself is executing, or allowing me to pay the schools the two-hundred-and-one-thousand and some change. That is owed to them. How this works, it's, it's a net zero gain. So whatever's owed, if they owe five thousand dollars or five hundred dollars, we bill them, they pay it, and then we build, or then we pay the school. So we're the middle person. In future contracts, we will not be the middle person. That, that's just not an appropriate relationship for, for what I believe. But that's, it's not abnormal. It's just, if you remove us from the situation, then we don't have to get involved. I will say that all three businesses, well, two businesses certainly, you know, they expressed, you know, that this is unfortunate news. It's hard to go back to 2017 and ask for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, ask for ninety-three thousand. And I was really proud and happy to say that, you know, through the discussions, they understood the partnership. They were, they understood that although this affects them, this also affects other people. And all of them, with the exception of one, is willing to pay a hundred percent, the other one seventy-five percent. And, you know, the schools have been happy with how we've gone about this process, and moving forward, this will be executed and implemented. The, the system itself will be done right. So I'm, I'm happy about this, this result, and I'm confident that we will be moving in a far better direction.
I would make a motion that the law director draft an ordinance regarding the revenue sharing agreement payment, as spelled out by Mr. Gunderson. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Adams Claremont County Solid Waste District Solid Waste Management Plan. That is what our presentation was regarding, earlier this meeting. Presentation is for this management plan. So this is simply allowing us to pass it as part of their process.
I would make a motion that the law director draft an ordinance in the matter of the approval of the solid waste management plan for the Adams Claremont Solid Waste District. Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Valley View Letter Support. I know Vanessa was here. She's still here. She's hanging out. For the, the letter support, she did an excellent job presenting. We won't make her come back up. But within the packet itself is, is the document that was provided to council with all the maps and so forth. So the ordinance or, or resolution is, is simply to support her as she applies to the Green Ohio Green Space Conservation Program Grant.
I would like to make the motion then, to Vanessa and Valley View, that we certainly support this ever-important and incredible foundation that we have right here at our disposal in this community. So exactly what Benjamin said, I'm not gonna repeat all that, you know, but again, I'd just like to make that motion, that we draft that resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Alrighty, moving down the list, Sound Ordinance Discussion. So this is the opportunity to sort of read, review the, the sound ordinance that's in place. Provided in the packet is that of the Safety Services Committee, Committee Meeting Minutes. And, you know, there's, there's, Chief Mills provided a report to council regarding the readings he, he had over eight-one, eight-two, eight-six, and eight-sixteen, and what the readings were in different areas around town. There's a map provided. The officer did an excellent job, Sergeant Chestain, and, and then provided his observations following those readings. So this is the opportunity to discuss it. I, based off of the report, you know, you'll, you'll see there's some variations depending upon where you're at. I pulled a, I pulled a document from the Yale Environmental Health and Safety, which was a decibel level comparison chart. That's not in there. I just pulled it today. And it was talking about the decibel averages. So looking at that, a, a jet engine at a hundred feet is a hundred and forty decibels. A power mower is at a hundred and seven. A normal conversation is between sixty and seventy. A refrigerator's at fifty-five. So I, I can go down the list, but when comparing that to the actual readings, you know, there's, there's hardly, there's less than five, and I think there's less than three, that were above seventy. And according to this chart, a normal conversation is between sixty and seventy. So I take the same stance as I did in the, in the Safety Services Meeting. I understand that, you know, we've got residents that feel differently, but I think we need to make a, a strong stance in one way or another how we feel, because I believe that this is, this is important for our downtown. I think music provides vibrancy and helps with the growth of the downtown. And I think that this is something that I would rather just set it straight from the start and let's keep moving. You know, in our comprehensive plan, it talks about outdoor patios, rooftop patios. This is something that we have discussed numerous times, and, and I've talked with several businesses. I've talked to the distillery. They've made significant improvements to help with the sound, pushing that towards the river. They've got a shade sail to help knock down the, the sound waves. And I feel very strongly that this is something that contributes to our downtown vibrancy and success. And I think we need to continue to emphasize the importance of music.
May council discussion?
And, and I'll emphasize, this is simply a discussion. We have no ordinance coming out of this.
I still go back that I believe that the ordinance as it stands is, is what it is. But I do believe that we need to continue to go back to the rooftop and to, whether it's sound or baffles or muffling, to try to contain that as much as possible. So I, I see the readings. I applaud our police department for getting those readings. And, you know, those readings are what they are. I mean, they, they are what they are. But I, I would just like to, to at least continue those conversations so that, though I'm making no proposal to change the sound ordinance as it is, that we continue to work with the rooftop to, to try to baffle or muffle any sound that's coming from that rooftop. Because again, it, it affects a few residents very negatively. There's no doubt about it. And as a whole, it doesn't, but, you know, we, I think they referenced three or four different calls and complaints about the sound. So obviously, it is disturbing to, to some residents. So I would just ask that we continue those meetings and to try to eliminate it even more. Not that the decibel levels are above any threshold, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, yeah.
You wanna continue the meetings with the distillery or in general?
The distillery, just, or if, as a, if we have any future, that we make sure we instill, whether there are sound walls or something, to the back of, you know, a, a stage area. Because the problem is, it's line of sight. If you, if you stand on High Street and look through there, you can, you know, you're, you're at the direct level. There is no sound baffle that's coming off that rooftop. So what's offensive to me, you, or, you know, obviously, any of the residents is, is obviously very different. But I just think we need to make sure that, and that we don't make it any worse, I guess.
Yeah. And I can see for future development, I mean, we definitely have to keep that, be very mindful of that.
Because are, are we saying that if another business wants to put, you know, that doesn't presently do music on their rooftop, AKA the brewery, that they're now permitted to have bands up there? Because they were told they weren't allowed to.
Right. That was part of their agreement. Verbal or writing commission?
Right. But I'm just saying.
I think if you talk about future developments, asking someone to do that, or looking at changing the zoning, not the zoning, but whatever the, the plan might be, is fine. But, you know, I think the stool rioters have made good faith effort to try and correct the problem, and they're in compliance with the law.
I'm not saying that. I'm not, you know, I get...
I understand, but when you say what you're saying, I think it leads the residents to believe there's gonna be a different outcome. And I don't think there's going to be a different outcome. I don't personally have any interest in changing the zoning or the, the ordinance personally. And I feel bad for the handful of people, but it's literally a handful of people.
I, I really appreciate this work that went into this.
Except for I had to figure out what time 2027 was. I had to do some math. I had to count.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very appreciative. Because it really gives a true picture of what sound, and sound is subjective. We've talked about that all along, the, the decibel level.
Any other discussion?
Excellent. Moving on, state capital budget request. Within the packet itself, I provided a very simple sheet that outlines some, some of the example projects for the state capital budget. This is something that we will apply for at the end of the year. That is in conjunction with our state representative Schmidt and the Claremont County Port Authority. What we're looking at doing, or what my, my, my opinion of this at this point is, is I would like to apply for pickleball courts. We don't have pickleball courts. That's, that's been funded time after time. There's, there's two locations that we're looking at, one being Semvila and one being Riverside Two. So we're getting quotes on that now. And then we'll have sort of drawings for that to sort of bring before council. And there's, I just wanna sort of start the conversation and, and make sure that that's supported by council. We're not presenting it tomorrow, but it will be, you know, coming up here soon. So I wanna make sure that we're prepared. And I do have a meeting set up next month with Representative Schmidt to discuss what our capital request is. There's not a, a firm date, but that's something that we, we wanna take part in. That's, that's a good opportunity to get grant funds. So that, that is where my head is. But I, I wanted to open this up to council to see if there's any other thoughts or suggestions before I get too down, too far down the road. And you say, hold on.
I personally would not wanna see pickleball courts go into Riverside Two. I think SEM already has a layout that would be conducive to using grant money to repair courts that are already there and maybe reconfigure them to be pickleball. So I don't think we would need to reinvent the wheel. And again, I know no decisions have been made, but that's just where your head is right now. I say go for it, right? Anytime we can get money from the state that...
I'd put thirty pickleball courts down wherever I could. I, I'm a hundred percent in favor of... I'm 100% in favor of enhancing our pickleball, it's the number one game. If anyone goes to Sawyer Point and sees how much activity is down there, it's amazing.
Sure, but at a certain point, it's going to turn into the Dutch tulip market all over again, right? That bubble's going to pop, and we're going to end up with a bunch of pickleball courts that go into disrepair.
You could say that about baseball, soccer, you could say that about anything. I disagree. I'm just saying, I think the more pickleball courts we get truly enhances our community. I really do.
Yeah, I know a lot of residents that play pickleball, and I'm assuming at SEM you'd be retrofitting the tennis courts?
Correct. So what's being proposed in terms of the preliminary discussions at Semvila's or Sem Park is that of, on the tennis courts, there's two of them. We put a sports court there because, and I ran into this up north at the previous job, was when you have big cracks in that pavement, you can't just fix those cracks, you fill them in. Within a week, there is already hairline cracks because it was a similar surface. So what we proposed was doing a sports court on top of that, that would totally eliminate having to either replace that existing pavement and would eliminate any future cracks. Hamilton Township just put in a beautiful one, pickleball courts, that is very similar, ours is going to be better, but, so with the two tennis courts, we would essentially, we'd still keep the two tennis courts, but then on each side, we would turn the pickleball so you could have two and two. So you would still have the tennis nets, you'd still have the pickleball net, so it'd be a multi-use surface.
Could that grant money also be used to upgrade the parking and lighting there?
Yeah, it's not just limited to pickleball courts. Now, let me clarify that. We can submit what we want, and that's going to be where we work with our state representative to determine, you know, what she feels is the most competitive and fitting for her region. Riverside Two, I'll explain my opinion of that. To me, that is a park that is totally underutilized. It's close to the downtown, and pickleball people, when they're done playing pickleball, they want to go have a drink, they want to eat, they want to shop. That's why a lot of these, I believe, we put it purposely close to the downtown up north for that reason. So that is my thoughts on Riverside Two, is I think that there's a greater ability to have more amenities there and more offerings, and it's visible from the downtown, it's got parking that's close by, it's got a light that's close by, it's a very good location. And once again, there's not a discussion that, you know, we're not making a decision right now, but I just wanted to sort of tee this up so we can continue to communicate on this as we move forward in the process.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, next two items. These are simply for consideration, I want to get discussion and thoughts on this. Little Miami event, excuse me, Little Miami Brewery and Event Center, it's specifically related to the event center for this discussion. I provided a spreadsheet for both the event center and the brewery itself. As it relates to the event center, well, taking a step back to sort of how this conversation came about is, we recognized that we overpaid $26,000, almost $27,000 on the brewery, and we overpaid $2,000 on the event center for, we, there are several years in which we simply double paid. So once we ran that analysis, it was determined that, we looked at the event center and it was, you know, we realized that we paid the first two years without that increased value. We gave a rebate on what was not the true value of that improvement. What I am asking council to consider, and there's no ordinance, it's simply discussion, is I believe the fullest and true intent behind that program is to take an effect when that improvement is made. So if it's a grass lot, the intent behind that program is not to reimburse property taxes on the grass lot. The intent is, when there's a building there, that's when that incentive kicks into place. So what I'm asking is for council to consider that of adding two additional years to this, which would effectively, they would still owe the $26,000, but instead of them owing us $2,000 for the event center, we would owe them $11,000, so it would knock it down to about $17,000, let's just call it $15,000. So I just wanted to run that by council and see what everyone's thoughts are. We've really thought about this, and this is something that I felt comfortable presenting to council and getting thoughts on.
I, I'm sorry, I fail to see the benefit.
You would?
I fail to see the benefit of doing this.
To us?
Trying to recoup money that was overpaid to them?
Not that, well, I think we should get all the money back, but why should we make it so it's not the full amount?
Because I believe there's a balance due that in theory we owe them from this, if it gets pushed to where there was the actual improved value.
Yeah.
I think they've been a good investor in the community and kind of splitting the difference.
I think it's a good faith effort, is what I'm trying to get at, is because once again, I don't think the true intent of this agreement was to happen before that true increased value took place. They're fine with repaying what's owed, there's no question about that. But this is something that I just, I don't think receive the true intent behind that program, so just up for discussion, and I will handle accordingly, but that's all.
I, for one, like the thought that you followed there, I think that you're on the right path as far as making that right. I agree.
Same.
All right, thank you. So we will discuss next steps at the next council meeting. Next on the agenda is the CRA, so Community Reinvestment Area Conversion from a pre-94 to a post-94. We've run into significant issues with this pre-94 CRA for various reasons, and the CRA being property tax abatement. Under the pre-94, the incentive, we can do a 15-year 100% incentive without going to the school board, okay? With that, we've got a $1 million revenue sharing threshold, where after you meet that new payroll of $1 million, then there's a revenue sharing agreement that's in place that we have to follow. We also have very little discretion, and when I say very little, we have almost no discretion in terms of offering a CRA. So if someone comes and asks for a CRA, we have almost nothing to stop that, which means anyone could get a 15-year 100% CRA. With that, the territory is limited, and we've run out of amendments to that program. So for example, the Parkway has no CRA, which is why the Vision Development received a TIF that acted like an abatement, because the CRA does not extend out there. So my request is to do a post-94. What that does is, that moves our threshold to $2 million. I think that this would allow us to amend our territory to include that of the commercial areas, and right now, you're, we're a little limited in terms of, you can't do single-family housing, and although we have no intent to do a single-family housing CRA, 10 or 15 years from now, that might change. Also with this, that would change our abilities to offer that CRA in which we would have to go to the school district, we couldn't just do a 15-year 100% CRA. So there's, this is something that we've talked about, I've briefly discussed this with the schools, I know that they would be in support of this, as they would be able to have a better partnership, where we're not saying, hey, we're just going to do this 100% CRA, and it's a done deal. But this also allows us to, really, that income tax or that revenue sharing threshold at $2 million, that makes a big difference. So I wanted to run this by council and get your thoughts on this before we got too far down the road. We're ready to go if council gives permission, but I want to make sure that I've got permission.
Are we going to eliminate then, so we don't have this discrepancy? Are we just going to eliminate, or can we eliminate, the pre-94 CRA as even a possibility? Or...
That's my pardon, I'm sorry, Mr. Velardo, that's a good question, that's not my pardon.
Just curious, because I don't want to get us in, we're trying to make it better, but yet, you know, someone comes and go, well, I want the pre-94.
No, no, we would terminate the pre-94.
That's what I'm saying.
We would terminate, and it would be a post-94 only.
Okay, so there would be no, we'll call it, let's call it whatever it is.
Correct. Now, we have one, we have one pre-94 CRA that's in place, which obviously we can't change, which is the distillery.
Right.
Other than that, we have no existing CRAs outstanding after this year, other than the distillery.
Correct. And then the other, the 2 million, I get the 2 million, is that an appropriate threshold, or is that just one you like as far as what you've seen, as far as economic development? Is that too low, too high, or why the 2 million, only 2 million?
That's in the Ohio Revise Code.
Okay.
That's the requirement.
It's, you can't go, I mean, there's no advantage to go, or it's just $2 million?
It's $2 million on the dot, but that's where you work with the school district to identify and negotiate a revenue sharing agreement, and that could include, at $2 million, these are the variables, at $3 million, you know?
Okay, that's my point.
It could be unique with that.
Okay. You're not bound by that 2 million only, is that, yeah?
Well, that's, at the $2 million threshold, that's when the revenue sharing agreement kicks in. So whatever we define in that revenue sharing agreement is one thing, but that's when it would kick in. So anything under that $2 million, revenue sharing is exempt, so whatever is abated, it's abated, no questions.
Okay. All right.
Okay. You get on that?
Makes sense.
All right, is that it?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn from Committee of the Whole meeting? Committee of the Whole, not done yet.
Motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole, Jackie. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to new business and ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, you guys did this on purpose. Here we go.
He's going in.
Excuse me. Ordinance number 25-379, an ordinance authorizing expenditures for mailing the proposed 2025 amendments to the city charter to the electors of the city of Milford, Ohio, declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Milford seeks to inform residents about... Your mic, please?
Oh, your microphone, sorry, your mic, it's in the way.
Yeah, I mean, let me put the mic in.
Ordinance number 25-379, an ordinance authorizing expenditures for mailing the proposed 2025 amendments to the city charter to the electors of the city of Milford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Milford seeks to inform residents about amendments to the city charter by means of a public mailing as required by the Ohio Constitution, and whereas said mailing herein after referred to as the mailing 2025 amendments to the city charter is necessary to ensure the dissemination of important information to the citizens of the city of Milford and is required by the Ohio Constitution, and whereas the estimated cost to preparing, printing, and distributing the mailing 2025 amendments to the city charter is not to exceed $19,000 as detailed in the attached Exhibit A, and whereas this council finds that it is in the best interest of the public to authorize the expenditure of funds for the mailing 2025 amendments to the city charter and is necessary to comply with the Ohio Constitution, and now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to expend not to exceed $19,000 to mail the 2025 proposed charter amendments to comply with the mailing requirement in the Ohio Constitution. Section 2, under in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-379, an ordinance authorizing expenditures for mailing the proposed 2025 amendments to the city charter to the electors of the city of Milford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-380, an ordinance authorizing city manager to purchase a 2025 Ford F-350 utility truck from Fuller Ford at a cost not to exceed $74,847 at state bid price, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The city manager is hereby authorized to purchase a 2025 Ford F-350 utility truck from Fuller Ford for the service department at a cost not to exceed $74,847 per state bid number QQ884. The quote is attached and fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Competitive bidding is not required under Section 11.9 of the city charter because such purchase is being made to the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Section 2, under and in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-380, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2025 Ford F-350 utility truck from Fuller Ford at a cost not to exceed $74,847 at state bid price.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-381, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Olympic lawns for the Five Points Landing Park irrigation project, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. Council, excuse me, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Olympic lawns for Five Point Landing Park irrigation project per the attached quote. The attached quote is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules, read by title only, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-381, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Olympic lawns for the Five Points Landing Park irrigation project.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-382, an ordinance awarding sand filter media replacement bid to the Henry P. Thompson Company and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for such work at a cost not to exceed $168,500, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. Having solicited bids as required under the charter and having received three responsive bids, city council hereby awards a bid for the filtered media replacement at the water plant to the Henry P. Thompson Company, set forth in the attached document, at a cost not to exceed $168,500. In council's judgment, Henry P. Thompson Company's bid offers the best and most responsive price to the city considering quality, service, price, reputation, past performances, and financial conditions. City council authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Henry P. Thompson Company, perform such work in accordance with the big documents at a cost not to exceed $168,500. The bid documents are attached and fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Sections 12.3 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Resolution, 2025-668, a resolution adopting internal control policies concerning the local law enforcement trust fund, whereas the city of Milford has created a fund under Revised Code Chapter 2981 to receive monies designated and paid to the city of Milford through state forfeitures titled the local law enforcement trust fund created under Revised Code Chapter 2981. And whereas the city of Milford created this fund concerning financial accounting and the attached internal control policies governing the management, distribution, and accounting for the fund pursuant to Revised Code Chapter 2981. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the city of Milford, Ohio, that, Section 1, the city council hereby approves the attached internal control policies for the local law enforcement trust fund. These policies shall be in effect immediately and govern the receipt, management, and disbursement and accounting for the fund. Section 2, this resolution shall be enforced and take effect after its passage.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yep.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-383, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an additional professional planning and zoning support services with Stewart Land Use LLC for the completion of the zoning code and zoning map update project. Section 1, the Council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a professional planning and zoning agreement with Stewart Land Use LLC to provide additional services for the completion of the zoning code and the zoning map update project per the attached Exhibit B. The terms and conditions of this agreement are hereby incorporated by reference pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2. Under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules. Read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-383, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an additional professional planning and zoning support services with Stewart Land Use LLC for the completion of the zoning code and zoning map update project.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-388, an ordinance in the matter of the approval of the solid waste management plan for the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District. Whereas the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District, the district by its policy committee has adopted a solid waste management plan for the district. And whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 373455B, the boards of county commissioners and the legislative authority of each municipal corporation or township under the jurisdiction of the district must approve or disapprove of the plan by ordinance or resolution. Whereas the city of Milford and Claremont County has reviewed the plan and considered its duly called meeting, at a duly called meeting. And whereas the plan furthers the public interest and now therefore be it further ordained that the solid waste management plan for the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District adopted by the Solid Waste Policy Committee on June 11, 2025 is hereby approved. And be it further ordained that a copy of this ordinance of approval shall promptly be delivered or caused to be delivered to the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a mural easement, we need to amend this, to enter into the solid waste management plan. I'm going to, that's just a typo. I'm going to write solid waste management plan, and we all know what we were passing, all right? Solid waste management plan for the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District, period, the attached agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2. Under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-388, an ordinance in the matter of the approval of the solid waste management plan for the Adams-Clearmont Solid Waste District.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Order number 25-388, an ordinance authorizing the payment to Milford Exempted Village Schools for Outstanding Community Reinvestment Area Revenue Sharing Agreements. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to make payments to the Milford Exempted Village Schools in the amount of $201,574.64 in accordance with the Community